Confirmation, so Janice Gomes contacted me, she's not here. We have Amanda Souza.
Here.
Rosemary.
Here.
Verty. Susan Gill, present. Adam Reposa.
Here.
Terry.
Yeah.
Peter Berlanti.
Susan.
And Christine.
Here.
Okay, and then support staff tonight is Travis DeCotta, the solicitor. We have Rick Rogers here from DPW, and we have Joe Cardello here from Steel Engineering. So, okay. All right.
Is Stu 401-935-7634?
No, he's 8213.
Okay. So Bill Smith is here.
Oh, all right, okay, very good. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and put him up and I'll read the item. So the first item is Tiverton Horizon Development Corporation. Master plan, public informational meeting, Lake Road Acres, six lot major rural subdivision. Lot 609, lot 109, West Side Lake Road, west of Jacqueline Way. R80 and Non-Creek Pond Watershed Secondary Overlay Districts. Action is review of possible vote. In time clock of.
So. So Court Chappelle said that Bill Smith is with him.
Okay, so can't take a seat. So we have Court Chappelle and Bill Smith here. If you guys can introduce yourselves. Know your presence. There you are. Good evening.
We've been sitting here for under court instead of Bill and listening to you say Bill's not here, but we're together.
Oh, all right. Okay, go ahead, you guys, it's your turn.
Okay. Basically what we're proposing.
Could you identify yourself just for the record, Tara?
Bill Smith from Civil Engineering Concepts.
Court Chappelle, Chappelle and Chappelle, and Richard LeBlanc is with us as well.
Okay. And he's the owner? Okay.
What we're, the board has seen this in a different form. It was a 13-acre parcel that was approved several years back. 13 lot subdivision, it was approved several years back. Property's been sold, and we've redesigned it. We've actually looking at a six lot parcel on the 29 acres that's there. We've designed it, we went to the board for conceptual review. We had some input from the board about trying to preserve stone walls where we could and adjusting some of the lot lines. We made those adjustments as best we could. And what we're proposing is five lots, one of which would be the existing house that's on the property. And a six lot, that would actually be a larger lot. And we wanted to use that for agricultural purposes. Horse raising. Proper terminology, horse breeding. We do have, we've tried to keep all of the development, we have kept all of the development outside of the watershed area. We've kept it to the east of that in order to try and respect the watershed. And I know Joe's had a chance to look at it, he had some comments. If you would like, I can go through those comments and try and respond to those. And then I think Court has some questions in terms of logistics and how we get to the finish line. If that makes sense, I'll go through the questions, the comments from steer.
Well, can you give a little more descriptive, because we have some new members that aren't familiar with this plan?
Okay. All right, so the property is located on the west side of Lake Road. It's the former Barbosa property. It was originally designed as a 13 lot rural subdivision by the prior owner. Delia Drive was the name of the subdivision. And we've scaled that back considerably. Again, trying to reduce the number of lots, respect the watershed, and that sort of thing. There's a short section of roadway that's being proposed. That would, the intent is that that would be accepted by the town upon completion. Open space consists of the watershed land, some of the non watershed land, a small section where we'll do some storm drainage on the southeastern portion of the site near Lake Road. Soil testing has been performed, wetlands were verified, and wetlands permit was issued for the prior 13 lot subdivision. We will ultimately have to go to DEM for wetlands and a modified subdivision site suitability approval. The lots range in size from 30, roughly 30,000 up to 20 acres. The way we've laid it out was we've incorporated some of the open space, the bulk of the open space onto our lot number six, which is going to be the agricultural lot. There will be a house associated with that as well on that lot, but it will also have a, you know, a large equestrian component. Not equestrian, horse farming component. The.
So just as a couple of points. As you know, this, when it was Delia Drive, it was a 13 lot subdivision, and we came in as a concept plan and said that lot of road, a lot of drainage, and quite frankly, the numbers didn't quite work. You know that Tiverton Horizon, basically Buck LeBlanc, who's been before you a number of times, is the principal. And this lot number six, which is the largest piece, is for his personal home and a personal barn and riding ring to board horses. Your zoning ordinance in a R80 zone allows this boarding to happen under special use permit for all R80 lots that are under five acres, and as a matter of right, for all R80 lots that are over five acres. So we had to draw Buck's lot at least five acres. Eventually, we're going to talk about the open space component, because in other rural subdivisions, some smaller than this, you've allowed the open space to merely be attached to some of the lots. In the ordinance, when you read it, it appears that there's a, in your first case, you want that open space kind of a separate lot and deed it out to the individual lot owners. But your ordinance specifically says that lots that are being used for agriculture can be restricted in a different way. I think I've told you before, I own a horse farm and riding trails and are doing basically exactly, or do for 15 years now, exactly what Buck is doing. And although having neighbors walk those paths may be just fine and something the board can consider and we're okay with, we can't have unfettered use of neighbors with cars or motorcycles or motorized vehicles, because it creates a tragedy with horses on horse trails that spook and throw children and the like. So we'll get to that part of it. But ultimately, when we came before you, it looked like everybody seemed to like the fact that we're going to have six lots instead of 13. Every building is going to be out of the watershed. That includes all of the buildings for the agricultural farm if located on the single lot owned by the LeBlanks. So it seems to just be a nice fit for this area, perfect for the watershed, and it protects all of the area. And we can still, like we say, give some walking paths around the outside where it abuts, where it abuts Wheatamow Woods. We have to make sure that our horses don't go onto Wheatamow Woods, because of course, that's not allowed. And we also want to make sure that the general public on Wheatamow Woods isn't necessarily coming on to our property. But we believe that can be done with just some, you know, discreet signage on the property line, just to respect the privacy of the owners and the safety of the horses.
Yes, Joe, do you want to go through, or Bill, if you want to address the?
Sure. So the first comment, these were dated from July 24, 2020. On the cover sheet, there are three sheets listed as sheet number four, and really, that's a typo. We should have made it sheet five and six, and that will be easily corrected. As noted in comments provided in previous review letters, provide square footages for each of the proposed dwellings. Right now, we've got an estimate, we haven't run a full-blown set of drainage calculations yet. We can add square footages. Again, that might change, but we can show you what our drainage is going to be reflected, you know, what it's going to be based upon. Show the 100-foot radius around each of the wells, we can certainly, we'll do that. Callouts for existing features that are proposed to be removed, such as removable portions of stone walls for driveways. So we can certainly do that as well. Ensure that the proposed lots conform to the Town Frontage Regulations. I'll try and add some additional footages on the plan so that we make sure that that's very clear. We have checked it and feel that we are in compliance there. Provide cross-sectional details for the proposed roadway and the typical proposed driveways with the adjacent qualified pervious areas. We can certainly add that. Our intent was to provide more detail at the preliminary plan stage, but we can certainly add that now if the board wishes. Show the QPA, QPA outside of the limits of disturbance implies that there will be no clearing, grading, or other work within the QPA areas. And that was what it was intended, we were going to keep that as undisturbed or limited disturbance area for the water to try and infiltrate through. Provide water quality sizing calculations and the appropriate details for the water quality accommodations, including the bio retention systems, QPAs, filtration swale, and the bio retention BMP on the plan. Again, that normally is shown at the preliminary stage when we have the drainage calculations submitted. If you need that now, we can provide that, but our intent was to incorporate that into the final, the preliminary plan submission. And again, after we've gone through and gotten DEM approvals, just to make sure that they're on board with it as well. We would ask that we be allowed to provide that at the preliminary stage. Provide a cross-section for the swale proposed along North Lake Road. The swale will require review and acceptance by the Town Department of Public Works. The prior subdivision also had a very similar swale system as to what we were proposing. So we would provide those details and we would coordinate with Rick on that. But it was consistent with what was approved previously by both the town and by DEM. Indicate how the shared driveway portion for lot three and lot four will be maintained. We can certainly provide some information on that. The open space is shown on its own lot, does this comply with zoning regulations? Can a non-buildable lot be created? Who is going to own the lot? And I think I've got to hold off comments on that one until Court poses a couple of questions to the board in terms of how to better deal with that and open space management and that sort of thing. Is a fence required around the detention area? Provide a gate for access and maintenance. The detention basin is two feet deep, so it's not a very deep pond. And as such, I don't think that a fence is warranted. I think that's going to become more of an attractive nuisance than leaving it. And it would also be intended to dry out, you know, 36 hours after the rainfall event. On the proposed road profile at the intersection with Lake Road, please review town regulations and design standards for intersection grades and revise as necessary. I will look at that. I thought we had hit the mark on that, but I will double check that and adjust accordingly. At Station 2+50, there's approximately two feet of fill proposed. And the question is why? Would it be better to balance the cut and fill and match existing grades to the extent possible? Some of that fill was, allowed us to keep the basin a little bit deeper. It's fairly flat through there, so I will look at that and try and reduce that fill amount. But I think we're going to have to have some fill. Certainly, a 1% grade coming in from Lake Road all the way through would have been perfect, but I wasn't able to move the water and have the bio retention basin deep enough to perform the way that I think it needs to. But I'll certainly review that as we get further into the design of the drainage. And then please show water table elevations in the profile. We can certainly incorporate that into the plan.
There's a lot of items on here, Joe, maybe you can help us out just for all the board. Which items you would like to be completed at master plan? Obviously, some of these things can go to preliminary plan, but those then would be conditions that we'd need to make. So can you give us guidance on this?
Susan, just so that you know, I am having a little trouble hearing you. But I think, go back to the list, I think a typical section would be good. So that way, the board and Rick understands what is being proposed for a road, pavement makeup, the swale. The town is going to own this road at some point. So at least, I think the town should be able to weigh in at this time to see, as long as everything's going to be acceptable to them. A lot of the things, 100-foot radius around each well, those things are going to be required by DEM. The sizing is going to be required of the infiltration areas and the QPAs, that's all going to be required by DEM and the permit. The profile. I'm pretty sure the regulations require like a 1% grade for at least 50 feet at the tie-in. And that, you know, led into the bias of two feet of fill. And that's fine, you know, bringing in two feet of fill, that's an expensive contract or the developer's going to have to endure. But I just would like to see some grading, because if the road is elevated by two feet, then the water from, any runoff from any of those lots will not get to the road. If the road is higher than the lot around it, so. You know, it's, I always make the joke, the only thing you need to do to be an engineer is to know it flows downhill. Making the road higher, it's not going to flow downhill. So it's just something to think about, the grading and how all the drainage works. And then I guess Mr. Chappelle will deal with the lot one open space. That's really just a comment to the board, to the town, that open space, it is going, it's a detention pond or infiltration area. It's probably going to be town-owned, town-maintained. Or if it's privately owned, can you actually build it? Does that meet zoning regulations? Is it a non-buildable lot? So a couple of legal questions in there as well. As far as a fence around it, that's subjective, and I'd really defer back to the town and DPW. It's only, might it only be a couple of feet deep? But by being a couple of feet deep, is it the attractive nuisance where people are just going to dump grass clippings or leaves or whatever, because it's not fenced, so it's just, it's a nice dumping ground? We see that all the time. Now, this predetermined, pre-sized hole for everybody to go dump their leaves in the fall or grass clippings. And then nothing ends up, you know, it doesn't work as it should.
So swales, we can maintain them.
Yeah, we're maintaining them. So if it helps, the drainage structures and the drainage systems are going to be privately maintained. They're going to be outside of the road right-of-way, it would just be the roadway itself that we would ask the town to accept.
So to address Joe's issue, on open space one, we see that as a standard basin with a homeowner's agreement, that each of the owners have to pitch into the association to maintain that. The reason that I don't think it's going to end up a dumping area and those things are, if you look at the location of it, it's our signature front entryway. Every owner has to drive by it to get there, and it's part of the road system that we would expect to be landscaped and maintained and put in association together to do that. So that part's pretty simple. I think Travis eventually may have to weigh in on this, but I don't see that the privately maintaining and putting in of a basin is a primary use of a lot that requires zoning relief. I think as part of the subdivision plan, it can be put on, it can be ordered and put in that on the open space lot owned by all. Remember, open space lots are owned one-sixth each by all of the individuals. So, you know, it's basically just an accessory to the neighborhood. We seem to do that everywhere else, I don't think there'll be a problem here. The biggest problem, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to sandbag you Travis, because I think I should have called you first, but a lot of this has come up in the last couple of days. If you look at Article 9 for Rural Residential Developments, and if I screw this up, I'll try to explain it again, because I find it a little difficult. Under Rural Residential Developments in R80, we're allowed to have 30,000 square foot lots. And because we're allowed to have 30,000 square foot lots, there is a special lot coverage. And the special lot coverage section, which is in Section 7, says that we can have 4,750 feet of lot coverage. So what they're really saying is if you were an R80, you have 10%. But because it's 30,000 square feet, we're going to give you the equivalent of 15.8%. So this table gives us more lot coverage for a smaller lot. And that's fine, all of these lots will be well within that. But what was designed to give more lot coverage is a handicap on the big lot. Because are we to read this, that the LeBlanc's 20 acres lot is now restricted to 4,750 square feet of lot coverage, when you would have over 20,000 square feet of available lot coverage? And I assure you, for anybody that knows about a riding ring, when the riding rings are 160 feet long and 70 feet wide, they alone will exceed 4,750. So we're going to meet certainly the requirements of an R80 lot. But I think, I don't think it was the intent of the ordinance, but I see a strict reading of Article 7 saying rural residential lots in a rural residential subdivision, although they can be twice as small, are now limited to much less lot coverage. And I'm really, I'm not trying to con you, I'm trying to figure out a way for you to get out of it, because we're telling you right up front, we're trying to have a barn and a riding ring and a house. The house will be, you know, modest enough and well within any lot coverage of a few thousand square feet, 2,500 square feet footprint. But when you add the barn and those things, you get close to 20,000. If you look at Section 3, entitled General Provisions, it reads as.
Mr. Chappelle, you said Article 7?
I'm in Article 9, Rural Residential Development.
Yeah.
General Provisions, Section 3.
Yeah, it seems like it should have been percentage rather than actual square feet, you know.
But it's not that we can't fix it by doing the right thing, it's that we don't want to create the wrong precedent to others. That's my humble opinion, anyway. But in General Provisions, it says rural residential developments are required in the watershed protection overlay district. Where rural residential developments are required, the planning board may forbid a conventional subdivision when the applicant can demonstrate to the satisfaction of the board that the rural residential development is inappropriate due to concerns. So I wanted to know, one way to fix this would just to be to label the LeBlanc lot a conventional subdivision lot and all the other ones rural, and that would give them conventional R80. Or Travis, if the planning board can vary the 4,750 and say that that would that would clearly go to the applicant for his house and garage like anybody else, but that the agriculture use could be as set forth on the plan and will locate the farm or the barn and the riding ring and give you the exact square footage. So I guess the question is, can the planning board vary the ordinance as written when they find that it? Or can you just make it that the intent was 15.8%? I don't want to create bad precedent, but I don't want to create a situation where, thank you, we've approved this subdivision, and then, oh, by the way, we go get a permit for the riding ring that we drew on the plan, and they said, I'm sorry, that exceeds 4,750 square feet.
Right.
So we need a solution that we can all try to work on between now and the next meeting. And, because I think it's a solvable problem, but I think the planning board wants to do it in a way where it's an individual decision and can't be used as precedent in any future type of residential rural subdivision development.
And that lot that's going to have the, can you hear me? I hear some.
Yes, I can.
That lot that's going to have, going to far exceed 4,750, that's the one that's going to have the horse breeding range.
And that's going to be approximately how much square feet?
I think you already mentioned it, but.
Well, at the, so here's the next question on that. I read this, if you read the Rural Residential Subdivision regs, which Tara sent to us, it said that the open space would be individually owned by everyone, but that it could be restricted if it was agriculture.
And you're looking at 23, 41.
Yeah.
41, yeah.
41, and that is, I read the agriculture, yeah, 41I4, right?
Right.
C4, C4, yeah.
So the question to me now, Travis, is, and everybody, if agriculture, it makes sense to make this open space part of the LeBlanc lot, but for you to buy deed restriction, we can give access to the other six owners limited to walking access on the trails with an easement by foot only. That gives the open, I think, space for the neighbors to use it, but restricted in safety. It gives the open space plan that there's no development on it, no future development, no, you know, that it's only used for agricultural purposes. So it locks it up into open space. The problem is when we start saying to six lot owners, you can own one-sixth of it, and there's agriculture on it, and you have liability because there's a horse thing on it, it starts to get a much more difficult legal picture, and I think that's why the agriculture exception is there. But it's not as clear as I would have written it if I had foresight.
Yeah, that's a good, it is, it's a legal question that needs to be tackled, and I'm even reading Section 2 above where it says the open space may be one or more parcels separate from house lots, but does that mean that it has to be a parcel? It sounds like it could be, but that's definitely something that the board and I guess the legal department can certainly weigh in on more heavily.
I think for us, we just want to tell you upfront exactly what we're trying to do, which I think we have all along, and make sure you're comfortable with the concept and the use, and then make sure that legally, we do it in a way that we don't create title nightmares for people, liability and insurance. I mean, mine, it's on my land and I have a policy for it and I cover it, and if a tree falls, I have the responsibility. In general open space, all six people have a responsibility. And if I bill a guy to take a tree off my land that he doesn't walk on or ride on, he's not going to like our agreements. And really, it isn't going to be that practical.
Certainly. Okay, no, I appreciate you explaining that, or at least that position clearly, and I'll definitely work through that.
Yeah, I would, I would say that you probably can't do both a rural residential subdivision and a conventional subdivision. The way it's stated in. Where did you show me, um? Oh yes, the density of the rural subdivision shall not exceed. That which would be allowed for conventional subdivision, the density of the rural subdivision may be based on. The planning boards evaluation of conventional concept land as described in the subdivision regulations. Um, I think that it's, I don't think you can have two different types of subdivisions.
Except for that paragraph that says you can make one of, and I don't know if that means. The entire thing has to be a conventional subdivision, even if it was though. There still would be no difference in density, just have to do variances. I, I think. I, I, I think, I think the way we read it, we may be able. We may be able to say that that forty-seven fifty is not meant to restrict this. There's another thing that no board likes to hear, but once you're a licensed farm, you're also not supposed to be able to pass a law that interferes with the farming. And that may very well. You have an ordinance that says you can have animal husbandry and barns and a riding arena. But by your math wouldn't allow it. But unless you had a, because I, you can't have a forty-seven hundred square foot riding arena is, I don't even know, it's forty by. Yeah, so you specifically have an ordinance that says if you have five acres of land, you can have it. And then the math, I think accidentally here says, sorry, you can't have it. And so I, I just think we need to get our heads together and see the best way to, to try to figure it out.
I have a couple of questions. Um, one is, is the riding ring going to be commercial or is that for private use?
Private use. If, if it is commercial, because we've had this before, as soon as we either did the teaching. Or riding instruction, the zoning board would tell us that we needed a special use permit to do that. Would have to come in if it's a commercial use. But for what we're trying to do is a privately owned barn. Lori's goal, I think, is to sell the lots to her horse owner friends. And to have, um, most of the horses that are in this barn actually have. At least in the first instance, one of these five available house lots. So it.
So how I, if you think again, if, if that lot is going to have a house, you also need to show the barn and you need to show.
Absolutely, right.
If you have to go for a variance, then, then that, I guess Bill Moore can help us out there. But those need to definitely be shown on the plan.
Absolutely. And I think if we deviated, would have to come back because any deviation from the plan would have to come back.
Lot one is okay to be an individual lot. And it's okay for lot six for open space to be part of an, of a residential lot. So it can be, you can have both. My, my thing was that if it's open space, you do have to allow all the, the homeowners in that just to have access, whether it's an access. So the question would be if they were able to use that as open space, what the liability and grazing horses would be that. You know, the applicant needs to consider. But I, the way I read the subdivision regulation, you have to provide. An open space management plan that gives all the homeowners within this development access to that open space. He can't claim that as open space. As a rural resident, as part of a rural residential subdivision and deny the rest of the. The houses access to it. That was, that was where I was coming from.
But it says that we can restrict it. So I, I do think if we restrict it by saying none of them can be there, you look at us and say, well, that's a pretty strong restriction. But I think that we want to be upfront. The area that we designate open space. We, we're going to designate a portion of the LeBlanc lot, seven or eight acres as. Their own curtilage and the open space to be all of the watershed area and all of the back. And then be clear on the open space plan. That it includes access to the walking pass on all of the back. But that certainly doesn't mean you can walk in and park your horse there, or you can walk into the barn or riding arena, because that is. On the private portion of the lot.
I think that's another subject. You just have to indicate on the plan.
Right.
Kind of what differentiates where the private, where the, where the residential part ends and the open space part begins.
And before we drew it, I wanted to know, we would rather have that barn and the riding arena on the LeBlanc property. Cause that just makes a ton more sense when, on the agreements. But if you wanted it on the open space property, then I didn't draw it yet, because I was trying to get this meeting to get. A little bit of insight, at least where we start. I know you're not locking into a position, but. I wanted to do it in the first instance where everybody thinks it makes more sense.
The barn and the ring would be accessory structures to primary residence. So I don't think that's, that's. An issue, but that makes, that makes sense. It's just, he couldn't designate that as open space and deny these other people access to it as the way I read the. Uh, that's not the ordinance that's in the subdivision, because it's, it's.
Right.
So the other thing I had, because you are well versed on this court, is we need the actual numbers of the frontage that you are providing to. Both lots, you know, you know, the cul-de-sac. And then.
The setbacks, yeah.
These are the lots, um, you need the frontage on that to make sure you have the seventy-five feet.
Right. We did use that common driveway as you can see, but that was, if you remember, I know everybody wasn't there. But that was because the original subdivision kind of cut across stone wall lines and didn't really maintain any of them. By using that common driveway, because of those common walls, you can see that. This kind of equestrian themed neighborhood is going to have this private driveway going down between. Nice rock walls and then into, into, into the individual gated driveways. So it's part of the entire theme here that I think is, is what's going to make this such a nice looking project.
Right. So I think, yeah, we'd probably just like to get his own determination letter. Once you get this all laid out clearly, because we'd have to master plan. For any zoning variances. And then the other issue I had was. Well noted was, um, we have lot five, Bill. Um, from Cook Farm, you probably recall, you have to have a hundred foot setbacks from the, uh. The wetlands in a rural residential subdivision. And it looks like you only have a fifty foot setback. The way I'm looking at it, which puts you, because I could see the hundred and twenty-five foot setback you have for, I think it's for the septic.
Yes.
So I think you'd have a problem with that one to get your hundred foot setback.
We'll make that work.
I don't know. Before we leave this, I don't know if any other board members have any, I know this is kind of.
I do.
Yeah, go ahead. About specifically about the open space management stuff, I want to stick with all that.
Right. Court, you said that, uh, the open space would not be developable in the future. It, in perpetuity, I mean, it's say the, the barn, uh, the business went under and. We don't want somebody to come back here and, you know, say, oh, I need to put up more houses.
Your rural subdivision ordinance says when we subdivide under it, all lots get marked no further subdivision.
Okay, and single family, I mean, they're all prohibited and there are permitted uses. I'm very well versed with it. But you're getting a bonus as far as the small lot sizes. So I just want to make sure that we're clear because we've had some issues in the past, but.
I heard. But no, it is clear to me that, um. Developing under this rural subdivision plan specifically says that, uh, there's no further subdivision. Now, I, I.
I know.
That makes it illegal to ask, but I'm pretty sure.
Some people don't read the regs like you do.
Oh.
Thank you.
Do you also have a, have a question at the moment? Um, some other things I was wondering, so you were planning to, at preliminary plan, get your, uh, DEM permits? Um, who know the soil suitability and all that, right? Because the Delia ones don't carry through or you can. However, you have to convert them, but you will be supplying those at preliminary plan. Is that what you, what you said? Soil suitability on the wetlands.
Susan, this, one is, one comment that Bill made, I just want clarification. Um, he said that the drainage would be privately owned. Uh, that does not mean, or does that include the catch basins and the pipes is, yeah, within the paved area, so there would be.
The drainage, the intent was the drainage within the forty foot right of way would be, um, I don't know, but the, the maintenance for the. Of my retention basins and the drainage systems would be the homeowners association's responsibility.
That, that's why I just want clarification, um, and, and just Rick, not, not so that you get more work, but. No, obviously it would be town maintained, um, so they'd have to be built to town standards.
Homeowners Association always says that if they fail to maintain it, the town can. If they have to, and then there's a lien against all the properties to repay the town like any standard maintenance.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's true for the detention area and I understand that, but the catch basins and stuff, uh, that. They considered, I would consider those public improvements.
That's our understanding as well.
Now, the other thing, there's a note on the plan, I think it's in. It exists in lot two, that it, um, just because overhead utilities, they need to be underground in a rural residential. If they're what you, what you commented on verbally, but on the plan it says overhead, so that needs to be. Commented on. And then also I think it was mentioned during the, the content plan you brought before us that you need to, um. Identify where approximately where the cistern will go, um, because that's required for this. I mean, it makes sense that if you put it in that open space lot one.
If you like, I can, uh, coordinate with the fire department to see if they have a preference as to where that might be best cited.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to hit all the specifics until preliminary plan, but for master plan, I need that to see that on the plan.
Okay.
Okay, um, can, can we revisit the, the overhead electric? I know the, uh. The developer is starting to, um, um. Clear a portion to, to start the, the house and some of the barns essentially, uh, coordinating with the building inspector. To do that and, um, he's approached national grid. Uh, and they were going to be putting in some overhead, overhead utilities to serve that. If, if that goes in, can we, can we continue the use of the overhead?
Where's the overhead?
The, the overhead would go down, down the road, the shoulder of the roadway. And, and it'll feed, it'll feed the, 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 the house and the farm, the, the, and the barn and whatnot. And it would be sized so that it could, um, the appropriate transformers to serve the other lots.
I think it's going to take away from what we've tried to do with this design standards. I understand what Mr., where Mr. Rogers is coming from because of the decorative, uh, fixtures, but.
Right. Well, I just want to bring up when we revised our subdivision regulations last November. Um, section twenty-three, forty-three, we revised it that item B is underground utility shall, shall be required by the planning board. So it's not a more, you know, so. Underground utility. I'm finding it so pretty strongly that. You know, if you're doing rural residential, we want to maintain that, that look. Without power lines, so we do need to do that adjustment.
The, the question would be if that, and I know. Would that be different if they were already in? Cause with the time that takes all this, what they have is they're trying to get a barn, which remember they have a thirty acre lot that they can. Go draw the permit on a barn and stuff now. And there, you can't really go put underground utilities in a road that doesn't exist and hasn't been approved and. But you're allowed to give an easement to the grid to put poles, um, and just so happened we'll give an easement. Where the road's going to be located, but we can't expect the town to inspect and to do underground and all the things that need to be done. And sometimes these things take a long time and they're, they're trying to get things in for the winter, so. That becomes an issue. And once it's in, could we utilize them, I guess, is the question.
Is Rick still here? I don't see him, you know, if Rick's.
It's the overhead that we don't like.
I don't see Rick.
Oh, I, hold on. I see him in the, I just promoted him to.
There he is. Ricky, I was just wondering if you have one way in on this.
Yeah, could, could you repeat the question, please, Sue?
Well, it was that, that our subdivision regs require underground utilities. And they're basically asking for above ground along the road to go back to lots.
Yeah, yeah, DP, DPW, as Rosemary was saying, uh, is not fond of any kind of. Electrical fixtures that DPW will have to maintain. It's one thing to maintain a utility pole lamp. The utility companies replace the pole if there's an accident, God forbid. And Prism puts the, uh, light up and many times that light is still in. Satisfactory shape to be put back up. The decorative lights go anywhere from a grant to fourteen hundred or more. And there's nothing in the DPW budget to allow that. So if there's decorative lights hooked. Uh, DPW would want that under the homeowners association responsibilities.
I think he's asking about general power line.
Yeah, general power lines, DPW is fine with overhead electric and overhead regular utility poles.
Put it to the board and, um, Travis, I could ask you if, if it's written as a shell in our subdivision regs, um, shall be underground. Does that mean we need to provide a waiver? We'd have to vote on a waiver for it.
Well, it's, it's, he's building it, um, because he's allowed to have one building. So subdivision yet, right? Is it?
Yeah, but, and that's exactly true, but we understand.
But it's still rural residential.
How that looks. Well, right now it's just a regular subdivision, so we can do it. But, or it's right now, it's just a regular single family lot. And I would certainly if we, with the decorative lights from the homeowners association, if we needed a bond, we could make sure that the town doesn't have any responsibility for that. But, you know, part of, um, and I know money's not, doesn't drive the world when it comes to doing what's right. But remember this thirteen watt subdivision basically approved with all the bells and whistles. Wasn't markedly sustainable. That was the problem, the roads and the length of the roads and the retention ponds and the utilities. Part of being able to take a thirty some acre lot and only having five houses on it. Is that you, you need to be able to have development costs that, that work for everybody. And we're trying, we're certainly not asking for private roads and we're certainly paying for roads to town specs. But we're trying to do what we can to make this economically feasible to, in my opinion, preserve a. Pretty nice spot right next to, I, I know the neighbors, I haven't seen any complaints, but I, I, I got to figure they're happy with it. And I know ultimately we need to make you happy, but if DPW is okay with the, with those. Lines, as long as we bond or put into a homeowners association in the lighting. We would ask you to respectfully at least consider that for us.
Sure. So right now, you're going to be, you're going to be putting it overground in anticipation of using it for the whole subdivision though.
Well, we're putting it in for the barn, but we're, we're not going to use poles that are shorter that wouldn't. The only difference is the grid decides what's there and, and. At least with what I've seen, the grid, if they know there's, they're going to use those in the future for the houses. Uh, puts in a, a potential higher pole and a. use those in the future for the houses, uh, puts in a, a potential higher pole and a, and a, a pole that's designed to carry that load as opposed to, I mean, technically I think you can run a single wire in some to just, to just hook the barn up, you know?
But it would, yeah, go ahead, Susan. Did you say?
No.
Hearing background music, okay. Uh, I mean noise, but it would be, once there was a subdivision in place, if it were to go through, it would be in direct contradiction of the sub regs. So, I mean, yes, the board can provide a waiver, the, the, the regs do say shall. And so, I mean, it's up to the board to be completely honest.
Would you require a heavier service for the, uh, stable, Bucky, you, in your past?
The, uh, sir, the, uh, stable will have a two hundred amp service and the house itself would have a two hundred amp.
Why?
The particular lot would have four hundred amps.
Right. So why don't you draw a line down the, the property line instead of going down the road? Put a separate service in.
No, they, uh, not, National Grid determines what they want to do. So if I apply and I'm building a barn and I want power, they're not gonna say, we're gonna give you underground power. They're gonna set poles and they're gonna give me power. Not to say we may not do this, we may just wait until the whole subdivision gets approved and then work on the barn. We're, we're not sure what we're doing just yet, but our question is if in fact National Grid says we'll give you power to that barn, but we're giving you overhead lines. Well, they're not gonna come in later and say, well, we took all the overhead lines and the poles and put underground there. They're not gonna do that. But we don't want a problem getting approval with the, uh, planning board that, well, you don't have underground lines. But we're gonna only get what National Grid will give us.
Understand.
You know, so that's, we're kind of in the spot right now. Not trying to pull something and get in poles when you don't want poles. But if we do fill the barn, we need power. And if National Grid tells me, I'm only giving you overhead, we're not giving you underground, you don't even have a subdivision on it, that, then, uh, we have to take overhead.
Okay.
Down the road, we don't want the planning board to say, well, you can't use the lines.
I, I understand where you're coming from.
If we know, we know.
I think it would be advantageous for the board to do a site walk on this property too, in the near future.
Sure. Anytime I can meet anyone there, show them all around.
I think that's always a great idea personally.
I, I do.
And sooner than later, cause there's no mud right now and that, so.
I know.
I don't like those visits in my shoes.
Right.
Mary, I don't know if anyone has my number, but they can call me and I can go there anytime and show them plans that Bill has, or we drawn up the whole plan.
Understand, Buck.
Everything else is.
Thank you very much. I understand that, but unfortunately we can't go it personally. We have to go as a group and it has to be advertised, et cetera.
Do you want me to set something up?
That would be good.
Sure.
Very interested by enough members of the board to go see the site, get a better sense of it. So maybe, I mean, usually we do them on a Saturday morning, nine o'clock.
We, we'll make ourselves available and if it's hard for you, I'll shoot it all on video for you, but.
Okay, all we can do is, um, Jennifer can pick a couple of days, shoot it out, see if there's, uh, enough members of the board that are interested. And that's, I mean, we usually don't get everybody to go, but a few people to go that are interested and get a better sense of it. Um, I don't know if we want to decide tonight, um, on the underground versus overhead. Um, I think part of it, we did strengthen that language when we redid the subdivision regs, because before it was optional, it was encouraged, but not required. Um, that's why we strengthened it to start granting waivers. Then it's kind of undoing what we did and, and unfortunately, or fortunately, it's not part of, should not be part of the board's decision in planning land use, what the expenses to developers to do some of the work. You know, if they're doing the for-profit development, that's not something we particularly take into consideration. So I'm just letting newer board members be aware of that. I don't know, were you planning on revise, doing all these revisions and then bringing all this back? What you planned was, cause I think we've kind of, unless board members or, and actually this is informational public hearing, if there's any, I don't know if there's anyone from the public that.
I have, I have a few more things, uh, I thought we were just gonna stay on the open space, but I do have some things that Bill submitted, uh, and, um, if we could have a couple of minutes.
If we do that, that way I guess if we can get everything out there, that he can get us another plan, um, ready for, for the future. All right, go ahead, Rosemary.
Okay, on the, uh, first of all, on the packet Bill that you submitted, there was a couple of things, you know me with my typos and stuff, but, uh, are we missing a page of, on the cart? Let me see. Sheet three of three from natural resource conservation service. It goes one of three, two of three, and there's no three of three.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if it's supposed to be. The other thing was, uh, on page, I guess it's your narrative that you prepared for us, uh, about the watershed. Also, none of this site is not located within the primary or secondary watersheds. It is in it. There's an error there.
I don't think it's in the primary or secondary. I think that it's far enough away from any of the direct tributaries that it doesn't meet the definition. I will double check that.
It says secondary on the, on the agenda. That's the only reason that I, I brought it. You know, on, it's advertised as secondary. We could be wrong too.
Let, let me double check and I'll, I'll confirm that.
Okay. Then, let me see. On the, on your plan, on the cover sheet, we have a couple of things. Joe already talked about the three sheet fours on there in his notes. And in note five, no, it's note four, uh, lot two of Lake Road Acres Minor Subdivision. I don't think that's necessary.
Okay. All right. I'd be happy to take that off.
It, this is a standalone subdivision. This is not, we shouldn't be referencing the old, uh, Babosa one.
That's, that's, that's fine. We, we take that off. I didn't, I didn't want you to think that we forgot about the, the old, the subdivision.
Because you gave us the rescission letter. Uh, this is also a rural residential subdivision in the title. And then on note eight, there is no North Lake Road. It's Lake Road. I think we brought that up before.
Yeah, I guess, if, if you look at the assessor's map that's on the first page, it says north on there. So that's, that's the reason that we, we, we carried it forward. I'll, I'll take the word north off, but you also need to correct your assessor's maps. I'm not sure how you would do that.
Vision appraisal and all the appraisal companies put that stuff on there, but it's in the land evidence, it's Lake Road. My church is on Lake Road. Uh, okay. Number, number eleven. I think this is, I don't know, the rest of the board might want to weigh in on this, but we referenced the Delia Drive Major Subdivision Final Plan. There is no final plan recorded. You know, I think that just muddies the water. Somebody may be looking for it.
Okay.
You want to put a notation, not recorded or something like that to it? Never recorded or something, you know?
Or we could, I could.
Rescinded by, rescinded by developer or something.
Terrific, terrific.
I think it was really just so you guys all knew.
Understand court, but if some title examiner or somebody goes in the vault and sees that.
I agree.
But, uh, let's see. And the cistern, you're gonna decide that later on? Okay.
We'll put a reference to it. Um, and then with the location to be established by the, uh, coordination with the, the town entities, fire department, uh, DPW, however.
After, after seeing what they did with the four rod wave, you might want to look at that. The fire department had some requirements.
Right, right.
Alarms, et cetera. Um, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions, comments?
Does anybody in the, in the attendees would like to speak? They should raise their hand, virtually raise their hand. I don't see anyone.
Okay.
Also, the time clock has to be extended.
Right. And just last couple of things, I mean, I would like to make sure you include what the frontages are on those lots on the cul-de-sac. And also I'd like to get something from the building official when you get these plans. Jennifer, I'd like to have building official weigh in, give us a formal letter on this, what, what he sees as that, um, yeah.
And do we meet the dimensional requirements and frontage requirements?
Well, I mean, basically we give them the plan and they review to see if there was anything that, yeah, whether he has any questions, not anything that doesn't need zoning, whether it's something in lot six, whether it's frontage requirements, um, any dimensional.
Probably send them the plan with the drawings of the over forty-seven, fifty, so we can get that issue right out in the open.
All right, if you submit it to us, what we do is then submit with him and he sends a zoning determination letter to advise us what zoning needs, if any, is required. Get on the same page. Yeah, and then the other thing, since the time clock.
So, Susan, if I can?
Yes, sure.
But one of the other things you had brought up about the hundred feet from the watershed area, um, perhaps that hundred foot line should be shown. Um, I've done some quick measurements and PDF here. And on lot five, uh, basically a hundred feet goes right through the middle of that lot, so that, that house is gonna have to be reorientated. I don't know if that will change the property line layout, but, uh, you know, from, as from a master plan, you should make sure the, the lot, the building shown actually fit, uh, within compliance, so.
Yeah, I mean, you should show the setback from the flag wetlands is a hundred feet.
They should fit the building envelopes, Joe?
Well, well, more so than the building envelope. You've got the building envelope shown, but part of the building envelope is within the wetland.
Which one was that?
By the town that says the building should not be within a hundred feet.
Which lot was that?
Five.
Five, okay.
So I think we have to show the building envelope with more than just the zoning setbacks with the wetland setback.
Right.
So a, a reduced building envelope. I like to show the envelopes, cause as you know, another project, when you, when you actually draw the buildings, there's issues of whether exactly that size needs to go in or neighbors thinking that it's exactly that size or exactly that location as opposed to the allowable location, subject to the overall size requirement.
Right.
You're still looking for us to show a building though with a square footage as a, uh, representative, uh, development.
I mean, I think you've got it shown correct, well, almost correctly. You show the building setback lines, which gives you the building envelope, but then you also show that hundred foot, uh, setback that basically reduces the actual area that you can play, site the house.
Sure. Okay. Understood.
Okay, so the two things we need to, to do, um, look forward to, is if you can get it, the plans with the things we discussed tonight on the steer and all these comments and. Then we need to, uh, first of all, which should we do first? Continue the public informational meeting or?
There is somebody who, who said something. Yeah, I don't know if they want to speak. They just, they just said, just wanted to let you know that the owner has been very respectful of our property and letting us know what is going on. It is appreciated. Deb? I'll, I'll see if she can speak.
Identify themselves?
Okay. So Deb, I put you, yep? Do you want to, your name and?
Yep, Deb Polish, four, three, two, Lake Grove.
Okay.
And we actually met the owner and his wife and, uh, just wanted to comment, they have been very, very respectful of our property, um, letting us know what is going on, um, just talking to us when they see us. And, and we are very appreciative of the fact that it went from a thirteen, lot development down to a six.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Hi, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, so which order should we do this? Continue the meeting or do the time clock extension? I guess we do that as part of the, part of it. So your, your time clock, um, or our time clock expires in October twenty-eighth, so we need you to, to request an extension of the time clock.
That's fine. We'll request an extension.
So, two months? For how long? You gotta give it to.
You want to do it one meeting at a time or how do you really do it?
Well, how about?
I'm never unreasonable when you ask me to request things.
Well, if you do like sixty days or whatever, that takes it to.
That's fine.
End of December.
That's fine.
You know, like two more meetings to get through rather than just one.
I think that makes sense.
Okay, so we're getting extension to.
Twelve thirty-one?
Okay. That sound all right? Is that acceptable to the?
I was gonna go to twelve twenty-four, so we got a Christmas present. No, it's a New Year's resolution.
Right.
Snow, water.
So, all right, so.
I'll make a motion to extend the time clock to twelve thirty-one.
Are you going to twelve thirty-one?
Sure.
A second?
Second.
So we have an extension of the time clock to December thirty-first. Any comments? Okay, all those in favor, I have to do audible roll call here.
I'm go.
Okay, so I just, Amanda?
Yes.
Uh, Rosemary?
Yes.
Stu was here. Is he still around? We lost Stu again. All right. Susan, yes. Adam? Adam? Adam's on mute.
Mike's off, yeah, Mike's muted.
Dave?
Yes.
And, oh, Peter?
Yes.
And Christine?
Yes.
Who goes against?
How did you vote, Madam Chair?
I voted yes.
Okay.
So we, um, we don't have Stu, Dennis, or Adam, I guess. Adam, are you back? I guess those are.
I think he just stepped away momentarily, but.
Right. So now, um, yeah, so if you can get that stuff to us. So now we just need a motion to continue the informational public meeting to our next meeting, which is November tenth, during the week after the election.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
That's good, cause I'm back then. I thought it was the first weekend.
A motion and a second to continue this to November, yeah, November tenth. All those in favor? Okay, we gotta go through this again. Amanda?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
Susan? Yes. Adam? Adam? Dave?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Yes.
We're missing Stu. All right, so that's good. I don't know how many that is.
Could you set up the, uh, site visit too?
All right, Jennifer?
Yes, yes, I will. Stu is calling me.
Oh, all right.
Hello, Stu?
All right. I think, um, yeah, we could let them go. All right, so we're done with that. So what we'll do is be looking for, um, some revision in plans with things that were discussed tonight.
Looks like Stu's back.
Oh, all right. Hey, Stu, we just voted to, um, extend the time clock to December thirty-first and continue the public informational meeting to November tenth.
There you did.
Our video. Okay, can I be here?
Yeah. Yes.
Hey, Stu, great.
All right, I'm gonna hang up with you, so it doesn't, is that okay?
Thank you very much, Jennifer.
All right.
All right. So Stu, Adam, did you catch that? We just did, we just did the vote on, on that to extend the time clock and to continue.
Um, the, the agenda item is closed. I did want to make one intervention in the discussion concerning the. I did want to make one intervention in the discussion concerning the overhead utilities. I'm very much opposed to that. We, we have a long rich, we, we have a long rich tradition um, on the planning board of not permitting that. Um, and I think it would detract from the, from the attractive rural use in that area, so if, so I just wanted to be heard on that, on that topic before we completely left that.
Yeah, we didn't make a decision on it, so, um, you know, we'll decide before we finish the master plan whether we're willing to that they get a labor report or not, okay?
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to, um, item, and Bucky, and, yep.
Just thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Good night.
Okay, um, item two is Highland Ridge Farm LLC Amendment to Final Plan Continuum. Um, this is gonna be heard on the zoning board tomorrow night, I believe, for act, yes. So, um, the attorney for this case, um, has requested a continuance of this item. So everybody got that memo. This will be on next month, so now we will go on to item three.
Do we have to vote on that? I think. We have to vote on the extension?
On the extension for what?
Of Highland Ridge?
I don't know, if we just say that it's gonna, I mean, it's not a public hearing or anything, it's just
Okay.
It's just an item that's being continued, do we have to vote on everything, even if it's not a public hearing, if it's an item?
I think it can just get continued.
Okay.
Well, it's just going forward, it's not a public hearing. And we haven't even heard it once yet, so.
Fine.
Yeah. Okay, so item three is Fodland LLC, here Deborah and Kevin Sanford, uh, request for entrance gate. Uh, Cook Farm Solar, flat eight oh nine, lot one oh one, forty-three sixty-six, Main Road, East Side, Main Road, West Side, Eight Rod Way. R eighty in Non-Creek Pond Watership, will relate to this discussion impossible vote. And I'd also like to make a motion to move item, because it's seven B, it's the first item, Cook Solar Farm, has to do with the decommissioning bond forward, so we can, um, take care of that with this item also, so is there a motion to?
I'll be happy to make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is also incorporate that instead of being at the end of the agenda, discuss that also. So we have a first and a second, uh, motion and a second, so here we go, votes, um, Amanda? Oh, Amanda, oh, you're muted, sorry.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, okay, uh, Rosemary?
Yes.
Stu?
Yes.
Uh, Susan, yes. Adam?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
It's been days where they do more.
Peter? Peter, did we lose Peter?
He's muted. Sorry, yes.
And Christine?
Yes.
All right, so we'll all right, so we'll go ahead and consider that item also, okay, so who do we have here for this item?
Fred, is there anyone else in the attending that's for you?
She, he asked about Kevin.
Kevin Sanford? You're mute, you're muted. Kevin Sanford?
He, he is trying to get in, I think he's
Okay.
He's been watching the proceedings for sure.
In the background somewhere, oh, there he is, okay, I see. Yeah, can you unmute yourself, Kevin? You're still muted, can you find the button?
How's that?
Yes.
Oh, thank you very much, sorry about that.
All right, we have new board members, so both of you could just identify yourselves for the record and for the members, would be great.
Fred, I'll go first, my name is Kevin Sanford, um, one of the owners, along with my wife, of Fodland LLC.
I'm, I'm Fred Unger, I've helped Kevin and Deb with the development of, of the project as, as you folks are aware.
Okay, all right.
So, um, we're, we're here for a detail, basically. Kevin was under the assumption, uh, all along, that we'd be able to rebuild the gate that used to be at the entry to the farm. And I neglected to ask the engineers to include that in the plan. And at this point, realized that we might need your approval to, to do that. So we, we just want to basically, uh, rebuild the gate that was there, make it look as much as possible like the previous gate. I don't know if you guys do screen sharing or not, but if, if that's possible, I could show the, the gate.
Yeah, I can. I think you can share.
Would, would that be helpful?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you know how to do that?
Well, we're gonna try here, and I'm, I don't know if I'll be able to get back to normal, but we'll try, let's see. So, um, this, this photo here, can you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's the, the previous gate before we started the project, uh, at the entrance to the farm. And it, it was, uh, about ten or twelve feet wide. The road's wider than that, now the road's about sixteen feet. So what we're proposing is a double gate that looks essentially the same. The hinges would probably be on the other side, on the inside of, of the gate. Um, just a white gate, like many of the, many of the gates down along Main Road. Along with just kind of maintaining the, the previous aesthetic of the property. Another important thing is that we're getting uninvited guests up to kind of tour the, the farm now, and, and it's, um, folks are treating it like a road rather than a private driveway, so we'd, we'd like to get it back to be a private driveway, there's concerns about safety with people up near the, um, near the solar farm and whatnot. So it's, the, the idea would be to, um, rebuild it pretty much where it was, um, I'm gonna bring up one other thing, I, I submitted this little sketch, previously with Jennifer, uh, after going out on the site, what we realized is it might be better to, um, rather than align the gate directly with the wall, we decided, we'd like to move it into the property. And provide a thirty-two foot clearance from the edge of the road and the gate. So we just turned the stone wall and then bring the, bring the gate back around here. And that's a pretty simple request, I guess, uh, it would be, it would remain unlocked, so there'd be, always be access to emergency personnel.
And we did receive a email from Lieutenant Dan Murphy, a fire, fire marshal, said yeah, if it was locked, you would just need to have access, so that was the, um, that was a consideration. Um, well, I think the further off Main Road, better, I was surprised it was even twenty-three feet off, but I built past it, it's like it's right, sits right there.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at, at about thirty-two feet, if, if that makes sense to you guys.
Is that to have more room for turnaround?
Uh, it's more room to just get in off the road to unlock the gate, um, there's not really a turnaround down there.
You'd, you'd fit, I personally, I'd rather see it line up with the, the stone wall.
Well, what we're proposing is to, to, uh, put an angle in the stone wall and come back about nine or ten feet this way, and then have the gate there, so it would still be tied into the stone wall, it would just be, the stone wall would come in a little bit. Mostly, mostly just for, for safety of getting off the road.
Um, I don't know if this is something that has to go in the plan, and Travis? You weigh in on that, or is this something, I don't, I don't know what the, the detail?
I don't think it's, I mean, when I, when I first was, was looking at this on the agenda today, I don't even know that it's necessarily needed to be here today. I don't know that we need to make an amendment to the final plan. Um, seems like someone who owns a piece of property is looking to put up a fence on his property, you know, and the final plan's already been approved. We've got the fire marshal who's indicated that it's, he's got no issue with it. Perhaps, and I don't know the answer to this, maybe there would need to be some type of permit for it, but I, I don't know that this is the, you know, required form. I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think that we would, I don't think we really have the jurisdiction to say no, right now, is really what I'm getting at.
Uh, Travis, would it be helpful to offer a motion, um, indicating the planning board's approval? Um, even though we're not amending the final plan, we're simply indicating our approval, and then there would be a record. It would be a matter of public record that the planning board has no problem with this.
Won't hurt it, absolutely not.
That'd be a good way to leave this issue?
Absolutely, Stu, I think it's a good idea.
So even, I would be happy to make a motion to approve the, uh, the new gate, um, based on the appearance of the old gate, uh, recessed in from Main Road by thirty-two feet, lining up on a reconfigured stone wall, um, all of the details that, uh, that Fred has shared with us tonight. Um, so I would make that motion, just as
I'll second that motion.
I think it was a comment, I think my Jennifer and I talked about it, uh, we just decided to put it on the agenda as for informational purposes, um, just to let the board know that the gate was being put up there, uh, one of my initial concerns was if it was gonna be locked, because there are two residential um, lots there, how that might impact, um, you know, private ownership lots, um, going forward, but since it won't be locked, it didn't seem like that's really an issue at this point, so I think we didn't put it up, we didn't know what the status would be, if it should be recorded on the final plan. But basically, we, we felt that at least for informational purposes, we wanted to make the board aware of it, so. Uh, with that, I guess we have a first, or a motion and a second to approve this, um, entrance gate. Um, so I'll do a roll call for votes, we have Amanda?
And can we just be clear, and Stu, one second, before we get into that, I should have said this. Stu, your motion is not proposing to amend the final plan.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, so we're not, we're not amending the
The only thing I'm trying to do now is not do it, but rather to put, uh, to put on the public record the fact that the planning board is aware of this and that we approve it.
Okay, I, I think that's good, that's good.
Okay, all right. I think Amanda's done, right, Amanda?
Yes.
Uh, Rosemary?
Abstain.
Um, Stu?
Approve.
Susan, yes. Adam? Adam again. Uh, Dave?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And Christine?
Yes.
Thank you all very much, we really appreciate it.
We have one thing left to talk about, Fred. Decommissioning bond, so stay on.
Thanks, Jen. Done, cross out.
All right, so the other item, I think, I need that item, uh, was our discussion impossible vote, Cook Solar Farm, oh, Solar, sorry, Solar Panel Decommission Bond Extensions, Discussion Impossible Vote, Cook Solar Farm expires October eighteen, twenty twenty. Jennifer, I don't know if you wanna comment on this?
Yeah, um, so actually, if Bill, Bill had talked about getting, uh, Bill, do you wanna?
Oh, Bill Moore's here.
There, Bill, I know, Bill is here.
Hi there. Um, yeah, I was just apprehensive, the project is coming to a close. And, um, we stumbled upon the bond running out, uh, at a renewable bond, but in November. So we've been in discussions with, um, the developer, and they were gonna get back to us on um, a true twenty-year bond. We looked through all your records, and we believe that was the planning board's intention, was a decommissioning bond to run twenty years at eighty-five thousand with inflation. Based on the way the planning board, um, voted on it, that's what I came up with, so please correct me if I'm wrong on that.
I believe it expires, um, October eighteen, so that's why.
So what I can tell you is, um, I talked to Tom Holt, the construction manager for, for Cearse, the people that are actually own and operate the solar part of the facility. And, uh, he's aware of the deadline, and he said he'll be getting, uh, the revised bond to you before the eighteenth. And I'll just, um, make sure he's in touch with you, Jennifer, if that makes sense.
Okay, so, so Bill is holding up the final, he won't get a final?
Well, I haven't held anything up yet, but, um, we haven't closed it out either.
So it's needed for the final building inspection, is my understanding, correct?
And I would like to add, I would really like at least Jennifer to sign off on that bond for the planning board, or however you, the board wants to do that. Um, you know, I don't want to make the decision on my own. Um, so whatever you decide to do is fine with me.
Normally, we have a solicitor review it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
I want you to go for the lifetime of the solar development, I don't want to put twenty years on it, because then, what if it's a twenty-five or thirty year? So I don't know if we can have it read something to the lifetime of the I don't know, of, of the develop, of the power development. However, however you word it, but yeah, usually we have the solicitor review it, I mean, if, if it's sent to Jennifer.
I'll, I'll send it to the solicitor.
If it's all been approved, then, then we go forward to Bill. But before Bill, I just want to comment that before any final thing is done, we still have not received the amended final plan that we approved several months ago. We've, the decision has been written, but the amended final plan has not been reported. And then also, um, as we're looking for as-built, since this is a commercial um, entity, so that we don't indicate any changes that might have occurred from the, the final plan, and just, uh, cement those in. Those are, those aren't recorded, but we have those on record, so, Fred, if we can get those.
That's fine.
I, I was waiting to get you the, um, the, the plan with the fence change until after this meeting, to, to see if we had to change the gate on the plans as well.
Okay. All right, yeah, so I think that's for Bill, that way you have, when, once you get your final sign off, we have everything. Okay. Um, does anybody have any other questions or comments about this? As long as we get it in time, okay, so do I have a motion, what do we have to do, a motion, well, do we have a motion? Because we don't have anything that we're approving, or we, what are we doing, motioning to?
Can we, why don't we have a deadline for when this is gonna be wrapped up, is, what, what is October eighteenth exactly? That just the, the dead, the expiration time?
Yeah, of the bond, yes.
Okay, and then, so we've got, and that's, so we just have this promise that it's gonna happen by the eighteenth? Right now, is that what's before us?
It's a Sunday, yeah. Right.
So can we, like, have some, some time that, you know, it's, it's gonna happen at least by next Wednesday, the fourteenth, so that we all know what's going on, and it gives us some time to act if it's not done, or something along those lines?
Well, I'll, um, communicate that to Tom, I'm sure he'll take care of it by then.
So I guess the question is, do we move on that?
Yeah, I guess we don't have a motion to make, because we don't have anything.
Right, um.
I mean, I wonder, I'm looking at the calendar for the
The fact that the building inspector's not gonna sign off on the permit without it, I, I'm sure you'll, you'll get it by the fourteenth, there's not a concern.
Sure.
I mean, it's not, he can't be up and running anyway, even if the bond expires.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, is there any repercussions if the bond expires and you haven't put something else in place, if he's not actually operating? I mean, is there any repercussions if the bond expires and you haven't put something else in place if he's not actually operating?
Right, right, we, yeah, correct, okay, no, so we're, we're, we're fine.
Looks like contingent on, we can't, we can't get final sign off until we have something recorded.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, Susan, I'm having a hard time hearing you, what, what was the requirement?
You were just saying, um.
Hey! Sorry. I wasn't muted.
Okay, so I was just saying that um, since you aren't actually operating yet, I don't think there's any downside if we don't have it before the eighteenth when your, the one you have now expires. So it's a matter of, we just would need something recorded prior to um, Bill signing off on you to, to start. So, you know, I've gotta get ahead of myself, we talked about me having a second meeting um, on the twentieth, so if we had it by the twentieth, otherwise our next meeting would be November tenth when we could actually vote on it. So I just say you know, that you get it to us the best, how about that?
With the amount of money they have invested in that project at this point, there, there won't be a problem, but also I, I think it's just a requirement that it goes to the uh, to Jennifer and, and Bill in advance of a building permit being signed, I don't think it needs another vote, I might be mistaken.
Um, no, it's a decommissioning, well, I don't know, it's a decommissioning bond that we approved initially, I don't know, do you need to vote on it if? Because the, the notes are warned that we have, well, yeah, I guess. We approved a decommissioning bond, the fact that, that what was recorded was a one-year bond and we're replacing it for something for the lifetime of the solar.
And all, all the details were pretty well spelled out in that decision we made.
And I don't know Travis, we don't need to vote on it again.
That decision was made with, with details and terms that it would, uh, the bond would extend over the life of the equipment.
Right.
Yeah, so we've already voted on that, we're good to go, and when we review the bond to make sure that the language is proper, then we should be fine.
Oh, alright.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to vote on anything now.
So, so will they need to vote on the language once it's figured out?
Anywhere the, so you, you regularly have Michael or the legal department review and sign off on. Are you guys gonna, I, I doubt you're, you're gonna hold, vote against it, right?
Right, I can just, I can just submit it to the planning board the next meeting, is that okay?
Right, I mean, normally when we do it, the, the solicitor reviews and then if it's a short-year bond, then the planning board will vote on.
You've already voted on it, I believe, Susan.
Right, and we've already done that, it's just that we're looking for something different than what we have in hand, uh, that we need to vote on.
It would, it would make, we'll review it, it'll be submitted, planning board should probably see it and will give our recommendation, I can't imagine the planning board will not accept it, but I think if, if that's your regular course, then we should follow it. It is a different, it, the terms are, it's a different bond, so just to make things clear and easy and clear for the future, might as well just do it again for the new bond, even though the terms have already been um, voted on, the actual bond and its specific language have not, this new one that's coming.
So you're saying we should vote on it?
We will, when, when, when we get it. When we get it.
Alright, so when they get it, then it'll be reviewed by solicitor and we'll put it on an agenda and it'll be a quick item, hopefully.
Yeah, and again, I'm just trying to follow your course, I don't think that that's always the case, but if that's what you guys do in the past, we should just follow that. Right?
This is the first one, is my understanding.
What's that?
I think this is the first solar decommissioning bond that, that towns look at.
I think we're talking about just bonds and, and, right, Stu, is that what you're referring to?
I guess so, I don't know, it's getting convoluted and overcomplicated, I'm just saying, I don't think we need to vote on anything tonight, I think you just need to get to us what we, what we need to look at. And we'll do a vote on it, because it'll get recorded, so I would say, I'd apply and board should see it and vote on it before it gets recorded. Just for clarity. Alright. Alright, so let Jennifer know when you have something. Fred?
Okay.
Okay? Alright. I think we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Stu.
Yep, thanks, Jen. Things are, seem so clear when I'm at home, I'm gonna get here. I'm getting muddy real fast, okay. So, item four. Main Road Properties Incorporated informal concept plan review thirty-eight seventy-nine Main Road, three lot major commercial subdivision. Plat seven oh six lot one eighteen and plat seven oh six lot one twenty. Northside Plunkettine Snack Road, West Side Main Road, Village Commercial and Monfet Pond Watershed, overlay districts. Discussion and recommendations. We have people to contribute.
Tim, is there anyone else uh, that I need to promote as a panelist, you and Roslyn? Is there anyone else? You're muted.
I thought Todd.
Todd Chaplin is here, I think.
Okay, I see him now.
Welcome to techno world. Okay. So, I don't know who's going to um, present, present this concept plan, whoever wants to begin, um, you have Tim Moore and Robin Lear here.
So you you all have a copy of the plan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, we're all, we're all good with that, go ahead.
Okay. So this is a, hopefully a very simple process that we're looking at. Assessor's Lot one twenty on Main Road currently has three fairly historic buildings that are being used for various types of commercial use and one of the um, tenants, Tiffany Paye would like to buy her building at three eight five one Main Road and would like to have the building come with a separate lot. So we are proposing a two-lot subdivision that would give her a twelve thousand square foot lot. Um, and then there would be an adjoining lot that would still have two buildings on it. Which in due course, uh, if we sell them as, to separate people, we would probably do a condominium approach rather than trying to subdivide because they would be undersized, but that's to be determined in the future. That second lot is about seventeen thousand square feet. So it would be under the twelve thousand square foot required. So in this case, as I said, just for the three eight five one, we're proposing a twelve thousand square foot lot, there wouldn't be any new construction. And the only issue that we have of, is that the lot frontage is only a hundred feet. The lot width is a hundred and twenty feet. Um, so we have an anomaly, I think in the zoning ordinance that has a lot frontage which is greater than the lot width. In the case of general commercial, the lot frontage and the lot width are both one hundred feet. And I think probably when the ordinance was drafted, somebody uh, made a mistake and didn't provide that both village commercial and general commercial would have a hundred-foot frontage and a hundred-foot width. Um, but be that as may, just in terms of trying to get a deal closed with the tenant, our proposal is to go to the zoning board to seek a dimensional variance for the frontage so that we can have a hundred foot of frontage uh, versus the hundred and twenty that is required. Otherwise, um, in discussions with Jennifer, we've had some questions came up as to whether this was a minor subdivision or a major. And um, it's uh, my opinion that we only need a minor subdivision approval, so even though the plan that was submitted says this is a major subdivision, we're really um, we believe just a minor because there's uh, there will be less than five lots created. And there will be no waiver or modification required, so under the general laws and under your zoning ordinance, I mean, your subdivision ordinance, uh, we should be a minor uh, subdivision approval. So our hope would be we would have conceptual approval from you this evening. We would then, you know, uh, plan for hopefully a preliminary plan approval in November and then uh, final plan approval subject to uh, getting the zoning board's approval uh, either in December or January. So I think that's the basic elements of what we are proposing, and so if anybody has any questions, please speak up.
I was wondering if, if uh, the engineer wants to go through the plan? You say he was here? Oh yeah, Todd. Um, you're muted, I don't know if maybe I could have you present the the plan.
Good evening, hi, Todd Chaplin from Mount Hope Engineering, I, I think Tim described the project, i- it's a relatively simple project. Um, we are only creating one new lot and um, we're not proposing any development whatsoever as part of this project, everything that's there is existing, this is essentially just creating one new lot line and then moving a, a second lot line uh, to the north a little bit to just change some of the, the square footage of the lot, uh, lot one eighteen with the building at thirty-eight seventy-nine. So there's no new roads, there's no drainage, there's no septic systems, there's no water, there's no wetlands, uh, and there's no, there's no construction whatsoever, so it's really just a, a lot line subdivision.
Okay, uh, Bill, Moore? Um, we have a
Yeah.
email from you, I'd like you to, to make some comments on this if you would. Since it seems like zoning is gonna be a part of this.
Yeah, I think, I believe the uh, next zoning hearing is December. If they get their application in by October thirtieth. Uh, November's already, the closing date is up, um, so that would be the soonest they could get on with the zoning board. And then as far as, I mean, I don't know, the, the zoning has been written for many years this way, so I wasn't around when they wrote it, I just read the rules and go by them, so a hundred and twenty feet of frontage um, and the minimum lot width is in most towns on how you do subdivisions and you have to follow both, sometimes they're not the same number, sometimes they are. Um, just depends on the town.
I'm just sorry, can you comment on the, the one lot that has two structures on it? Is that something that's allowed or is that something we need to get zoning with more?
That should be grandfathered, you know, these the three buildings have been there for quite a long period of time, probably predate your zoning ordinance.
I'll give you some history, because I've been here before, well, not before the buildings, but the buildings were on one parcel. And I've been on the board a long time and we've always been advised by our prior solicitors, this is a real pre-existing non-conforming parcel. I mean, the number thirty-eight forty-five was originally where Tiffany Paye's house was, that was John Wilcox's, it was moved up to that site. The middle building was a gas station, when the Weas purchased it, they revamped used everything, everything had been moved. And we were always told, once you have a pre-existing non-conforming lot and you move a lot line, you must conform to present-day zoning. Meaning side yards, parking, the, all the dimensions have to fit and there's no, on this plan that we've received, there are very few uh, dimensions as to how far it is, the buildings are from the front yard et cetera, you, you've used area, but you haven't used, told us about the parking, you haven't told us anything else. So be that may, be that what it is.
I think, Ray, I guess the question that I would have is one of the buildings maybe for this, the northernmost building might be too close to the property line.
Yes.
If that is the case, then I, we would be looking for a zoning variance for that also, I'm a little surprised that creating a new lot where the relationship of the existing building to the existing lot line doesn't change would require zoning relief.
You are creating a lot, right? It's not moving the lot lines as you, you have at the other end, why can't the whole parcel be condoma, what did you say, condominiumized, how do you?
Yes, um, it, it, it could be. Um, I, I think our thought is that we've got enough land to create a twelve thousand square foot lot. And Tiffany would much prefer to have a separate lot and not be part of a condominium.
Okay, but.
Trying to accommodate her, her request.
I looked at the, the referenced map that uh, Mon Hope Engineering referenced by Narragansett Engineering, and there's a driveway that goes through the thirty-eight fifty-one lot, would that stay there, it goes to the back lot? An entrance?
Yeah, since everything stays the way it is.
So it's, there's gonna be an entrance, there'll still be traffic going through that to go to the back parcel.
Right.
I mean, I think it's very poor planning if we start this. I mean, it's creating a diagonal on thirty-eight fifty-one with the new lot line.
Is there a reason why you did that diagonal, it doesn't make sense to me, I don't, I don't get that.
Giving her, just giving her twelve thousand feet and keeping the other side straight.
But why are you making it smaller, why didn't you just leave the lot line where it was?
Cause she wouldn't have the front, she wouldn't have the hundred feet, they're picking off the top.
I know, but if they
Yeah, the back, you're right.
There are two, two, couple of points that can be made, one is that she doesn't have need for the extra land, two is that in the back of the property, it's a parking area. And the lot to the south, uh, we wanted to make bigger just because it the use of that lot, you know, as we anticipate may require a larger lot, so we only needed a twelve thousand square foot lot and because of the lot frontage requirements to create a twelve thousand square foot lot that is so deep, you know, we had to shrink the back of the property, but it's not gonna impact uh, Tiffany's use of her property.
Okay, um, Bill, could you weigh in on the comment that was made about like setbacks, like the side yard setback for thirty-eight forty-five, are, are are they gonna require a variance?
Um, so I did not review the plan for that, the, the plan was not extremely clear. Um, getting sent over by email. Um, but if you can't meet the setbacks, I do believe you have to get a variance, although I think they're only ten feet in the village commercial. But um.
They're creating a new lot, he has to
Yeah, you're creating a new lot, it's not our problem that you need another lot, I mean, if you wanna move lot lines around, that's a little bit different, but when you create a new lot and Travis, that would be in the solicitor's view too is you know, what does Rhode Island law want, and I believe you need to make adjustments for the buildings on the lot line.
Right, too.
Right, yeah.
You negate your pre-existing non-conforming once you change that lot line.
Yeah, I agree with Rosemary and Bill.
The other thing I did was I found some old, on a previous plan, some sizes of the buildings because there weren't any included. So the lot, the 17,000 square foot lot, those two buildings add up to almost 2,000 square feet of lot coverage, which puts you at about 12%. Which puts you over the 10% that's allowed in the watershed. You also have to get relief for that. The other lot, the 12,000 square foot lot, it came out at 9% lot coverage, so that one was okay. And then in comparing that to another earlier plan, because it didn't include any of the utilities. I know there's the public water line that should be shown on the plan, how all the properties, when you get to master plan, how the water lines are. I don't know if there's still any existing cesspools. The last plan, concept plan that was submitted to us had two cesspools associated with building address 3879. And one cesspool for 3845. I don't know if those are still there. I'm not sure what the requirements are for if you subdivide this. I know there's a new septic that has gone in back there. I don't know whose responsibility it is then to make sure that they get hooked up to that, to make sure.
There's a new septic system that serves all four of those buildings. And they're also, all four of those buildings are served by water, by the public water system that.
Are those septics all hooked up?
Yes.
They've all been hooked into the, that new system?
Yes.
And cesspools no longer function?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that should be shown on the plan, those utilities. Joe, where's Joe? Joe? If you're still there. Joe? I see stepped away from him.
Maybe.
Yeah, I wanted him to comment on anything that had to do with what DM might require as far as like stormwater drainage if you're creating new lots. I think you'd have to meet the current standards for stormwater.
There's absolutely zero new development here at all. This is.
You're creating lots, so now I think that's what I wanted to find out. Didn't you have to meet to keep all your stormwater on the lots that you're creating? Because you're changing things. And then I don't know where the parking is and how much is required for each lot and where it is. I know it's been an issue for many years that this is shared parking back there, which doesn't exist for this area. But it would clearly need to be shown that you have adequate parking. And how many parking spaces? And that's something also then that zoning might be laying in on.
Yeah, there is a recorded declaration of covenants and easements that provides for either parking on the the lot itself or on the adjacent lot to meet zoning requirements.
Well, I don't know what, I mean, the solicitor have to tell us, does that carry forward if you're creating new lots? Or would that be something that would have to be agreed upon?
Say that once more, Tim.
I'm saying there's a declaration of easements that covers both sides of the road, both the Tiverton Four Corners properties and the main road properties, which provides for parking such that each lot has its own required parking. Or if it is short, then it borrows parking spaces from the lot next door. But we will, we can show on this survey, you know, that the lot has parking that meets the requirements of these stores or will designate, show where these spaces are on the adjoining property. So we will add that information.
Okay.
And Tim, does that easement that you're referring to include the drive from the road to the parking in the rear? That will be part of the new lot?
Yep, there's, there are cross easements of access in that document. Then there is a separate easement for the public well that serves all of these properties. So there's a separate easement for that with a plan that shows where all the water lines run. And then there will be, there is, that plan also shows where the septic lines run from the new system that was put in at 4879 or 3879.
Those are just deeded easements, correct? Nothing ever passed through the town?
Correct.
And that was when it was all in one ownership?
Yes.
All the properties were in the same ownership?
Yes.
No, they're not.
Well, for the, the new OWTS system, that is a, will be a separate easement that will only impact the four properties currently, the properties that are served by that system. So that's a separate easement just for those properties.
And those are the ones on the westerly side of the road, right?
Yep.
Oh, Joe, can you unmute? I had a question. You stepped away. When they're creating new lots, what would be the DM ruling for what they need to do for stormwater? Even if they're not creating new, any, any new, I guess, construction, but they're creating new lots? What happens then with their stormwater? Do they have to meet now standards?
No, I think they'd get, they would get, not a PD. They would be exempt from stormwater. It's, stormwater would only kick in when they actually try to build something. And then it would just be the residential stormwater requirements.
Why would it be residential, not commercial?
I'm sorry, if it's commercial property, they would, yeah. They would have to comply with the stormwater regulations for the development that's being proposed, right there.
All right, what would constitute, I guess, a change to the lot? If they had any kind of exterior construction or parking? Or would it have to be structures or impervious covers?
It would be any type of, it'd probably be any type of improvement, increase in impervious area. But then you get into that area, if it's less than 10,000 square feet, you know, they don't have to do anything anyway. So, so I, at this point, to move a property line or to create a second lot, I don't think there's any DM application necessary. It's once there's an improvement proposed, that would trigger any type of DM approval if applicable.
Okay. Do you have any other questions about looking at this plan? That stuck out to you that you had a question about? No?
So should we ask Bill for an official letter on the zoning issues?
So I do have one comment, Madam Chair. Are you ready? I mean, we don't know if the lot frontage is the only relief they're going to need from the zoning board because the plan's not really clear enough. We need a real plan that shows the buildings and shows everything. We can do an assessment of that. And then I do believe they need to go to zoning before planning, I believe, on the relief. But that's up to the solicitor and the board to think about.
Wouldn't that be like if we did master plan? If they came back for master plan, then it would, it would be conditional master plan approval depending on zoning relief? I mean, that's usually how we do it.
But we don't want to go back to zoning twice, right?
Why would, why wouldn't they just go after we do master plan approval?
Okay.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, usually they start with us and then go to you. But you're saying they would come to you first?
I mean, are you going to be able, I guess you would go through all your meetings for contingent upon a variance that you might not get.
Right. Yeah, but they'd have to submit detailed enough plans to meet zoning.
Right, right. Well, we need that to go to zoning.
I think this should probably be said now, Jen, just correct me if I'm wrong. If this is moving forward, or at least, Tim, if you're going to be alleging that this is a minor, then you would come in on a preliminary first and you would, your first step would be a preliminary after this, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct, Jen?
Yes, if it was, if it's a minor. And I think that you would need to go to zoning first or you could get approval for the preliminary.
So if you're going to come in and allege this is a minor, you come in preliminary first, you go to zoning, you come in on preliminary after already going to zoning?
Is that normally how you do it? Sue?
I think that's what I saw.
Usually if people are doing land development or any kind of application, they come to us first. And we do a conditional, whether it's preliminary or a minor or master plan for a major, then we do a conditional approval pending. I believe though, our definitions are that a minor subdivision has to be residential. It cannot be commercial. And this would put this into, if it's commercial, it would put it in.
So the minor, so the minor subdivision says a plan for subdivision of land consisting of five or fewer units or lots, provided that such subdivisions does not require waivers or modifications as specified in these regulations. And commercial is mentioned in minor land development plan.
Once you require zoning relief, then you require public hearing also.
Yeah, well, the, because they're not building anything, if they were building some commercial structure, then it would probably be considered a major.
I don't know that this is considered land. So are you, your first review, sounds like you're thinking this is land development. I read, I read it a little bit differently. Are you, are you saying that you believe this is land development?
Oh, no, it's a, it's a major, I mean, a major subdivision. A major subdivision can be commercial. It just can't be, well, yeah, I guess, because it can't be residential. I know, I know I've read it in here before that, that a minor subdivision has to be residential. That if it's not residential, then that automatically puts it into the major land development category, a major subdivision.
Yeah, I need to find that too. Because I'm seeing that non-residential land development projects shall be considered major.
Yeah, and there's no development on this.
But they're non-residential lots.
But the minor subdivision definition doesn't differentiate between residential or commercial. It just says, five or fewer units or lots, provided that the subdivision does not require waivers or modifications as specified in these regulations.
Minor land development is a minor development for a residential project.
Okay, so we have to differentiate, right? Land development and subdivision, right?
That's the difference, yeah.
Because land development is not, that's not what we're doing here.
But you just fall into the saying that is that such subdivision does not require waivers or modifications? I mean, would that zoning relief fall into that category?
So, so yeah, so Mike and I actually spoke about this today. I think that this definition, we're, we're kind of, we think that it refers to these regulations, right? These regulations, meaning the land and subdivision, subdivision regs. It would, I would think, I would think that it would cite to zoning ordinance if it meant that it needed modification from zoning.
Waivers and modifications are terms defined in the subdivision act.
They're not actually defined, but.
They are defined. They are defined quite clearly in the state enabling act for subdivisions. And they are defined in your subdivision regulation ordinance. I mean, your subdivision ordinance is also, use the same language. Waivers and modifications are defined terms that are granted by the planning board. They are not variances granted by the zoning board. It's very clear that waivers and modifications relate only to actions taken by the planning board to modify subdivision development regulations.
So, Tim, where are you seeing that definition? I see that there's a sub, there's a waiver of requirements, definition number 61, which refers to 2347?
452362.
You're talking about the Rhode Island general laws?
Yes.
All right, one second.
Your subdivision regulations mirror the language.
Right, so where in the subdivision regulations though?
I can't remember which.
2347?
Yeah, 2347 is what I'm looking at too here. And we've got waivers and modifications.
Yeah, it talks about waivers and modifications, but it doesn't define what a waiver and a modification are.
But there are buildings on this property already. Normally we deal with subdivision as being plain land. And now there are buildings that are losing their pre-existing non-conforming status.
But, right, but land development is usually considered, you know, improving on the land and doing something. They're just, they're changing the lines of the subdivision. And because of it, they're going to need zoning relief. I don't know if that.
Right, and zoning is in the town code, right?
Right, but these regulations are certainly, obviously, everything is broken up into specific regulations and sections here, right? And Appendix B land development subdivision regulations are what we're referring to when we say these regulations and these definitions. But, so I'm looking at, hold on, I got, thanks for that, Rosemary, I just got a little sidetracked though. 2347, right? Is that what we said? Yeah, this is a rather long section here. So again, the planning board shall have the power to grant waivers and or modifications from requirements for land development and subdivision approval as may be reasonable and within the general purposes and intents of these regulations. Where such waiver and or modification is in the best interest of good planning practice and or design as evidenced by consistency with the comprehensive plan and the Tiverton zoning ordinance.
So if we were to ask the planning board for a waiver or modification, then this would be a major subdivision as distinguished from going to the zoning board and asking for a variance.
That's what it sounds like.
No matter what, you're still going to need to come into compliance or get some type of zoning variance.
Correct, yep.
No matter what.
Yep, correct.
Whether or not it's major or minor is kind of the linchpin here. I think, Sue, do you agree or?
Yeah, I mean, I'm confused. I rely on you and Bill to tell us which it is.
Me. I think that there is, you know, there is. I, I think that there is, you know, there is, isn't, isn't clear what a waiver or modification is. Usually it is subdivision and not variance, but you, I think you could argue that a variance is somewhat of a waiver.
Right, it's a waiver granted by zoning.
Modifications are defined by the Enabling Act. They are not variances. Waivers and modifications are powers granted to the planning board. Powers granted to the zoning board.
And, and, and it does, it does add a separation here where it says that a waiver or a modification needs to be in the best interest of, and when it defines what the best interest of, it says planning practices and, uh, within comprehensive plan and Tiverton zoning ordinance. So I think a waiver and modification is different than a variance. It's just saying that when you do provide a waiver or a modification, when it's requested or needed, that it needs to be within the best interest of the comp, uh, and inconsistent, consistency with the plan and the, and the zoning ordinance. I think that, I think that's the proper read, and that's how I read it.
So if it's a minor, you still have to go to zoning?
Yeah, you still have to go to zoning, for sure.
Then he would submit a preliminary plan with all the information we need, and then once we did a conditional um, approval, then it goes on. That's how we always do it. Need all the, because I think, you know, zoning needs to see all that information. They need to see where the utilities are, they need to see the size of the building, the lot coverage. And in the, and when you submit the preliminary plan to us, then we would get a zoning determination from Bill. And he would let us know all the zoning relief you would be seeking. Otherwise, you're gonna be trying to figure out, go into zoning, what zoning relief you need instead of him describing it for you from the outset. And the preliminary plan then would be, because then once you get your zoning relief, you come back to the planning board to find them.
That's, that sounds fine. I think, I'm happy to work with Bill and work through the zoning to see what, what relief we need to ask for.
Well, I don't think, I, the way it works is he gets the plans. Use Todd submits the plans to meet preliminary plan, our preliminary plan checklist and all that, with all the information on here that we need, like size and dimensions and setbacks and all of that. And then, once we review it, or once, once we have that, then we send it to Bill, and Bill will provide us with the information for the planning board and for the discussion and for you then. It's not something you and Bill are gonna work out. It's something you submit the plan, he reviews it, and then he reports to the planning board what, um, what zone, what he recommends to us, what zoning relief is required so that we know what to do for our conditional preliminary plan. Um, saying, you know, that, that we approve this preliminary plan condition on fact that you get A, B, and C zoning relief from the zoning board. If you get it, then you get it. If you don't, if the zoning board denies you, then that negates your preliminary plan.
Right.
Right, so, um, I mean, you don't necessarily need to work with Bill. Todd just needs to draw up a complete plan, or plan, site plan for us to review.
We have all that information, and it's pretty much all on file somewhere already, so we didn't put all those building setbacks on there like at thirty-eight forty-five, thirty-eight forty-seven, because all of that stuff's existing and not changing. So, we can, we can add all that on there and show the septic, it's gonna become a pretty busy plan, but we can put all that stuff on there for you.
Yeah, multiple pages, but your setbacks aren't changing because you're changing the lot line, so the setbacks.
Well, the, 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 the setbacks are not changing on thirty-eight forty-five or thirty-eight, uh, you know, the front end, the setbacks to the front, to the north lot lines and those things are all exactly the same, because no, nothing's changing there.
Once you touch a lot line, everything has changes.
Yeah, and we need to see the curb cuts, we need to see where the access points are, we need to see parking, we need to see utilities. You know, your lot coverage, you're over on lot coverage on that one lot at twelve percent. Plus, I don't know what these storage, these storage units are. They don't seem to be very temporary, they've been in place in time, so I don't know what, what that means.
That would mean the dimensions on thirty-eight seventy-nine as well.
Right. Right, you need all that. And then, um, I guess the question is too, because I guess that came up, if he has to do a, uh, because it says in the watershed environmental review statement. I guess there was some discussion about that. I assume that it would be automatic since it's in the non-quit pond watershed. So I'm not sure why somebody was saying that it doesn't need one.
Because the, your ordinance says that it's required if a permit is issued. And there will be, there will be no permit issued for what we are proposing.
ERS is required when there's development.
I also have a letter from Tiffany. Do you want me to read, read it now?
Yeah, or summarize it. I mean, just if you can identify it, it needs to be identified for the record.
Sure, um, I received a letter from Tiffany, is it Peely?
Okay.
Hey.
E A Y, um, jewelry, and she says that she is in support of this subdivision and that she, uh, would like to purchase the building with the land to continue her business. Um, she's been in business at the Tiverton Four Corners for over thirteen years, and she would love to, um, make this a permanent home for her, for her, for her business.
Uh, Susan?
Yes.
May I make a, a brief and general comment, um, about this neighborhood?
Yep.
Um, I'd just like to point out to, to my colleagues on the planning board that this, uh, this parcel is part of a national and state register of historic places. Um, it's, um, it's an area, a neighborhood, Tiverton Four Corners that is very heavily featured in our comprehensive community plan as an important resource, not only because of its historical nature, but because, uh, because it, it is a destination for tourism and for people who shop at, uh, at, uh, the artist studio such as Tiffany Pace Jewelry, uh, business, um, and also, uh, related, um, uh, food and, and antique businesses in that neighborhood. It's a heavily built-out environment, it has been for years. So there are special planning challenges down there that we should be aware of, and we should be very sensitive to the fact that if we make things too difficult for the property owners, they can, they can simply bulldoze some of those builds. There is absolutely nothing in federal, state, or local, uh, law or regulation to prevent the, um, demolition of some of those buildings. So I, I think that we should, as a planning board, we should make every effort to work, um, very positively with the owners in the Four Corners Historic District, to, to assure that those businesses are successful, which is a big benefit for the economy of the town of Tiverton, and that they're also preserved for their historic value. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else have any comments you wanna make, suggestions? Okay, consensus, uh, was that this would go for a preliminary plan, is that correct? Okay, all right. Preliminary plan, I mean, it'll need to come to us and, and, uh, review. So sooner you get it to us, and then we can get back to you and get you on, back on the agenda. Do you have any questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Great.
I'm just moving people over.
Bring people forward. You know, and you've got everything. I'll go ahead and read the heading and, um, okay. Uh, item number five is Southern Rhode Island Properties Incorporated Preliminary Plan and Development Plan Review, Public Hearing. Proposed self-storage facility, major land development, lot one oh seven, lot eight oh one. East Side Progress Road, South Side Industrial Way, industrial and planned development park district. Review and possible vote continued from September first, twenty twenty, time clock ninety days to November fifth, twenty twenty. Okay, welcome back, um, for us here, if you can identify yourself. Let me get you, get all of you.
Yes. Hi. Good evening, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, David Martland, on behalf of, uh, the applicant this evening, Advantage Self-Storage. Uh, thank you for, uh, meeting tonight. Uh, we were last before the, before the board, in, at the September meeting, we had a very lengthy, uh, discussion that evening. Uh, went through, uh, the, the plans, uh, the, the site plans, uh, the various landscaping elements and the building elements. Uh, the, the board had certain requests, uh, of us and had, uh, requested some revisions to the plans and ma, and also to, uh, provide maybe some greater detail and clarification to some of the architectural elements, as well as, um, uh, some, some plans to illustrate the sight lines. So, uh, with us this evening, we have back Molly Titus from Dupree Engineering, who's the professional engineer, who will discuss the changes that she's made to the plans. We also have Joseph McPhee, uh, and he has prepared, uh, the sightline, um, view shed, uh, package, as well as made some revisions to the architectural plans and some responses that he will be able to go through. And, um, you know, uh, I guess finally, um, one, one of the issues that had also, uh, come up during the prior hearing was a discussion relative to the, um, uh, what was noted as, um, potential selective thinning of, uh, some of the existing vegetation uh, on-site, or actually in the, the public, um, uh, right-of-way. Uh, we've, we've looked at that further, um, and presently, for purposes of this, uh, presentation, we're not gonna be proposing any selective thinning, uh, for purposes of the approval we're seeking, uh, this evening. However, um, we, we'd like to, uh, continue to work with the town, with the town planner, Public Works, uh, the, the planning board, and ultimately the town council, and maybe a separate process that, that can follow up, um, after we, we work through really our, the, the site process here. So with that, I would ask that, um, Molly Titus, uh, take, uh, sort of walk through her plans, um, and, uh, discuss, um, the changes that have been made, uh, on, on those plans.
Okay, all right.
All right. Hi, this is, uh, Molly Titus from Dupree Engineering. Um, we revised our plans based on the, uh, prior hearing and also the written comments from Stier Engineering dated July twenty-third, twenty twenty. Um, within your packages, you have our revised plans, and I'm assuming all the, um, written response to comments for the site.
Yeah, the one, the twenty-first, dated September twenty-first.
Yep, dated September twenty-first, plans dated September twenty-first as well. I can step through these items. I mean, they're self-explanatory for the most part. These were all comments from Joe. I don't know, Joe, you're here. Are there any items that you wanted me to talk through, um, kind of discuss? Um, I think the response to comments are comprehensive in what was asked for. Like I said, I can go through them. There are a few items on the plans I did wanna review that were comments from the hearing that didn't, that weren't part of the comments written from Stier.
I, I think, I think I'm good. I mean, as you said, they were pretty self-explanatory, and I thought they were kind of minor. Um, so, I don't think there was anything earth-shattering there.
My question, Joe, to you was, so this was dated September twenty-first, so this was your comments from the first plan? But did you ever review the plans from September twenty-first? Because I don't have a report from you on that.
That's what I'm, I'm actually looking for that right now and.
Because I don't know if you did, did review this, the revised plan.
I don't think I've seen the latest plan I have. I'm just looking online now. Uh, uh, yeah.
The one for this meeting.
I've got the responses, revised plan, I'm opening it now.
Did you revise, did you review the, the plans from nine twenty-one?
Hang on, it's still loading.
Jennifer, Tara, did you ever receive, do you have some, did you receive the report from him on that? Because I know we had.
I know that he received, uh, the new plans are dated nine twenty-one.
Right.
Yes.
But you didn't.
Twenty.
You don't have a report?
Nine twenty, no.
Because I know his, the, the Dupree letter responds to the first one, but he doesn't, we don't have anything from him on the revised plan that I have.
Yeah, I, I think Jennifer and I spoke, and we said there was really no, uh, no real review or letter um, necessary. I mean, I did open it up, I, I did pan through them, and I said the, the comments were pretty minor, so nothing jumped out at me that, you know, wasn't addressed or remained a concern.
So was everything addressed you, you looked through?
As far as I can tell, uh, again, I'm just thumbing through right now. And I usually mark plans if I have, if I see something, and I don't see any marks in the plans.
Yeah, I mean, typically, we'd like to get some kind of, you know, even if it's like two lines that you've reviewed, and then you don't have any further comments.
Yeah, now I've got something here, um, Jennifer, not to throw you under the bus, but, uh, an email dated, uh, September twenty-three, uh, they've resubmitted plans and provided comments to review letter to, in July twenty-third. Uh, we don't require another review at this time. So, so I, I mean, I, I did look at.
No, I didn't mean, I think we talked about it, like, you would review it for the, for the meeting, but you didn't have to write anything up.
Okay. So, um, yeah, so I, I mean, I didn't do a formal review.
Okay.
But again, um.
I just wanna make sure you looked at the new plans. Because if we go forward with it, but if those are the ones where. Because if we go forward with it, those are the ones we're approving, I want to know that you've looked at them.
Yeah, yes.
Rick, are you there? I don't know if you have any comments or questions about stormwater or, I mean, there was something about a light pole and street and right-of-way and I'm not sure where that is, if that's on the plans, Molly, is there, are there streetlights on Progress Road?
Existing.
Okay, so you're not, you're not proposing any new streetlights?
We are not, no. And we've labeled the utility poles on the right-of-way now, that was one of the comments.
But yeah, it's on the other side, I'm looking for it, I give. Maybe it's there. Rick, do you have any comments for any of?
Susan, I'm just looking through and just the, the the response letter submitted by Dupree, I mean, they went line by line with each one of my comments and offered a response. So I mean, legal has been added.
Right, yeah, we have that.
So, I mean, I would say they've adequately addressed all my, all my comments. I didn't see any changes to the plan other than there are no, no changes of substance. I think the Planning Board you know, picked up on the, on the selective clearing and that discussion was held last week, so I would say we have no further comment.
Susan, this, this is Rick. Did you ask me if I had any comments, Susan?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to see if you had any comments or questions or anything you wanted to ask for.
Yeah, thank you. DPW, the, the feed is choppy for some reason, but DPW doesn't have any comments on the plan. The, the site meeting that was talked about a little earlier, DPW has no disagreement with the concept as described for the selective tree and brush and shrubs. You know, basically clearing out a little bit for selective clearing would have to be resolved between the town and the developer. Who's responsible for what and who maintains what, but the concept is acceptable to DPW.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I just want to point out for everybody on sheet seven, the, the parking that was reconfigured. And if you pulled that one away that was closer to the building to allow for access to those units. It was put down the front along Progress Road. So that was addressed. The one question I still had was for the propane tank. I still don't see any kind of line that shows how you're getting the propane into the building. I asked for that last time.
Yeah, until the propane manufacturer and, sorry, this is Molly Titus, the, you know, the tank provider and the manufacturer, it, it's unclear what end of the tank they will feed from, but it's going to cross underground under the driveway. It's not going to be a visible part. And I did add the bollards and the fencing around the propane tank as previously.
Okay, I don't know if it's worth it to, because this is preliminary plan, to put some kind of note somewhere that said to go to the access to the building will be, has been determined, it'll be determined by the GAF people or something. Otherwise, it looks like it's a standalone. I don't know if that matters or not, I'm just asking the question. And then I wanted to ask about our sheet eight and nine. So on sheet nine, you still have the grating on that downward slope on the western side.
Yes.
But on sheet eight, the grading, there's a drainage plan, you don't have the grading. Is that, I don't know if that was an oversight or you are actually proposing, if you're proposing existing topography or if you're proposing to do like.
Yeah, the grades are as per sheet nine, they just didn't.
It didn't carry through, okay. And then the same thing, I guess, it's where I tried to look up the legend, all the back, back in the stormwater drainage area, it's like what you had previously. On sheet nine, it also has the lines for grading. On sheet eight, it just has the cross patching. So I don't know if that was just something that overlayed up, left off again or.
Yeah, all those contours, those lines are all in the same layer, so something must have gotten frozen.
Okay, I, I just wanted to know like what you're actually planning to do, if you were planning to, you know, work with the existing topography if that plan had changed from what was.
I can't really hear you, Susan, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just saying, I, I didn't know which plan you were actually going to finalize, if you were going to show the grading or you're going with existing topography.
No, no, the grading is per sheet nine, the proposed grading. It hasn't changed, it's just
Okay.
Didn't print.
Alright, that's fine. I think again, it was probably just the way you didn't do the overlay, it's the landscaping plan. It has changed a little bit, not dramatic. And then I think last time we were still looking for the plan dated March 10th that you submitted to DEM. We still needed to see that to see what was actually approved by DEM.
Yeah, I, the approved plan set is with the owner, I would assume. I have the permit which I had submitted and the plans are identical to the preliminary initial submission.
Were there conditions granted with the approval?
No, I submitted the approval. There was no, there was no changes.
Because I know, I, I think Jennifer had asked for that initially and it was mentioned at the last meeting that we wanted to just to verify and trust to verify that, that the plans that DEM approved were the ones we actually have. I don't know if there's a way to get those, to submit those to the administrative officer for her review.
Yeah, I mean, I have the plans, the March plan that I submitted to DEM.
If that was the one that was approved, if you could just get that to Jennifer, it would be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, so the Stormwater Operation Maintenance and the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Plan, we have those and I think both Joe and Rick, you accepted those, those are, those are fine, right? I think we discussed those last time, I'm just trying to go through them. Yes. Oh, another part of the preliminary plan then is we need any legal documents. I didn't know, like in the Stormwater Operation Maintenance Plan, we'd like to have something recorded, which would probably be an abbreviated version of, of that booklet that you have. I don't know, usually we have the solicitor that review that as part of reporting of some kind of Stormwater Operation Maintenance, that's for GPW, so they always have that in hand and they, working with him, tell you more specifically what he's looking for. And also some kind of landscaping plan, the maintenance plan. I think in the Stormwater Plan, there was a brief, like two-thirds of a page of, of a landscaping plan, I don't know if that's adequate, I need somebody else to, to weigh in on that.
I think there's a landscaping plan, I mean.
Well, the maintenance plan.
Oh.
Yeah, it would be the maintenance of it, maintaining of it. Because we like to get those recorded as well. And then the other thing is the shorties, the infrastructure shorties. I know you, we had a letter for you that requested that that I guess it was working out, but normally the applicant develops the infrastructure amount for the surety, itemizes it and then Stair and DPW review it and that's when we vote to set on it. Unless you want to pay, it would be your, when you're dying to pay Stair to work up a surety for the infrastructure. You know, we like to do that, we try to get, you know, all the legal documents, shorties and kind of bonding that has to be done, done with preliminary plan approval. So that it's done before we come back to final plan, which just ties everything up. Those need to be submitted for the solicitor then to review for GPW and Stair to review. So we do need those. I don't know if anybody else has any other comments or questions on the site plan, though we could go to the design aspect and go over that part of it. Do you want to go ahead and, maybe else take over for that aspect?
Actually, Madam Chair, before we do move on to that, I, I did want to indicate that on the DEM website, the, the approved plan can be accessed and viewed on their online permit database.
Okay.
Do you have the permit number? It's easier to look it up that way.
Uh, the.
Yeah, I do.
It's
Yep.
Alright, then I just ask if Jennifer, if you can take a look at that and review it with the plan that we're approving and make sure everything lines up, okay? And then we can know if there's any major discrepancy.
And on, on the legal docs, I could certainly work with the solicitor to help put together any, any documents necessary that the town deems necessary for enforcement of those provisions that are in the, the O and M manual.
Alright.
As well as maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, I think Rick Rogers has a pretty good deal for it, he's seen enough of these. For GPW can, could let you know what they specifically is looking for or yeah, so you get that, we basically then have them review it and make their recommendation to us, so it's all recorded, okay?
Susan, can I ask a question just, just for clarity, so that we, that way the applicant, their engineer and myself, possibly Rick Rogers, are all on the same page. As far as a surety, the only thing that we would be looking for, for the surety would be the public improvements or repairs to the public roadway. It would not have anything to do with the paving or the drainage of the building itself. It would only be public infrastructure that the surety would be requested for and, and that's really a question.
Right, so I guess with the sewer installation, all that, with Rick, what he wants for the roadway?
Right, so I, I'm, I'm just, I'm looking at the plan now and so I, I see a length of sewer pipe, a manhole, it looks like a water valve, a thrust block, at least 20 or 30 feet of water main. Once it gets to the property line, it would really be the developer's burden. Is, I don't think the town's going to go out and fix a, a broken water main beyond the property line, that would be the the owner's prop, you know, owner's situation. Most of the town would do would go out and turn the valve to shut the water so it would stop. And then, you know, just the pavement repair, the patching, which I just looked at the detail, that looks adequate. If there's four inches of pavement on top of on gravel, the only, the only modification that I would make to that if needed, four inches or matching kind, in other words, if there's six inches of pavement out there, you put six inches back. But in, in no case, not less, not less than four inches. So.
Okay.
Anybody from the board have any questions and also probably continue public hearing, I don't know if there's anybody in the audience that has any questions, Jennifer, as I remember.
No, there's no one.
Okay. Anybody else from the board have questions specifically? I know Steve, you weren't here the last time and if you have any any questions about the site plans?
Um, no, I don't.
I won't state one. Okay. Alright. I guess. Alright, so I think once we get those last few items, like the legal documents and all that, we'll be ready to go ahead and move forward on the preliminary plan. But we like to have all those things in hand before we do that, so it's all at once. So the next part would be the design review. I don't know if somebody's going to talk about that or where we're going with Molly or.
Sure, hi, I'm Joe McPhee, I'm the project architect for the Tiverton Advantage Self-Storage Complex. Thank you for hearing us again tonight, I'm chair, members of the committee. I did put together a document that talked about the, was a response to comments from the previous board meeting. Comments that were prepared prior to that meeting and also I tried to address that a few issues that were brought up during that meeting. I submitted, updated cover sheet and some 3D views and elevation views of the building. I also addressed you know, the, the comments that were, were there. So, not sure if anyone has any specific comments to that. One of the things that does have to, have to do with the site was a comment about whether there was a dumpster and a dumpster enclosure. The owners made clear to us that commercial dumpsters are not to be installed on a site. As they are, you know, they are clearly not in the, the client trash business. So they want to make sure that that's clear to their clients and they train them how to do that. They have very limited waste themselves, which they handle in another way without a commercial dumpster. I'm going to entertain any questions or comments if people have any, there's 12 items that were discussed.
Your floor pages seem to be truer, as I.
Excuse me?
The paint colors and the brick, I think Peter specifically was looking.
Yep, one of the comments was more accurate rendering, color rendering of the insulated metal panels and of the and of the brick, veneer brick that's being used. So those are included.
So I think those, those only came electronically because you print them out accurately, right?
I think I included them on most copies. And they, yeah, printing copies often don't reflect very well. But the PDF is, is from their brochure. So there were a couple of design changes made to the architectural plans, which we, I can review in more detail if you'd like me to share my screen.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So that's the, the list. So that's the, the list. Can you talk about the roof plan? So in this, you can see some of the adjustments I made to the to the exterior. One of the things I did was I rearranged the mechanical units so that they're not seen from the roadway. On this parapet wall at the, at the two towers. Both have mechanical heat pump split systems kind of hidden behind them. The, the entry tower, we'll call it engaged tower. I also raised this canopy slightly to match the height of the of the other towers on the corners. And the elevator shaft actually was relocated slightly. And the mechanical units are actually located behind that. So they're somewhat off of, quite a bit off of the roof and obscured by those towers. On the south side, there's a, there's a parapet wall that is flush with the east side of the building that comes around because the roof pitches down this way. There's also a parapet wall that kind of obscures the the heat, the split outside unit of the air conditioners. This. So that's one of the things I'll show you the someone was interested in a little more, slightly better detailed you know, renderings show kind of what you'll see from the from the roadway of Route 24 South is kind of a view. You'll see mostly these are the trees along 24. Then there's another layer of trees on the other side of Industrial Drive. And then this is a view coming north on 24. In the and you just, you know, barely make out color. This rendering is, you know, you know, I'm sorry. Is kind of on industrial, excuse me, from Industrial Drive. And as you, you kind of make the corner onto Progress Way. And how you'll see the tower and the kind of some of the signage there. One of the questions had to do with the the signs, which I can talk about. There's two signs. They're both on the building. The question was wondering if there was one on the ground pylon sign. No, there are just two signs. One is, faces west on the north, northwest towers on the west side. And the other sign is on the north side of the northeast tower. So this is a revision to the revisions to the elevations that reflect that, you know, raised tower over the entry and the signage that's on that east side. These are labeled a little bit more dimensionally to show top of the low roof parapet, top of the high roof parapet, top of the tower parapet, eve height. And those are used in the, the view shed diagrams that I'll show you in a second. Those are minor changes to the canopy. And on the south and east side of the building, there was some discussion about the details involved in, on that eastern side, like the architectural interest. And in my statement, I basically state that, you know, there's a number of things going on on this side of the building. There's, you know, there's a base, you know, buildings have a base. They have a body or a shaft and they have a cap. This building has, you know, that's kind of an architectural convention. So this building has a base, has banding, horizontal banding, has a shaft, has a enlarged eve. It's not just a break metal, you know, the minimum break metal fascia, has a, you know, stepped fascia, has towers, it has storefront, it's got brick, it's got a canopy, there's significant things going on. So on the south side, I did add these panels, which are similar to the other panels. And I'll label it a little bit more. So those are, those are the drawings. Any, any comments on that before I move on to the view shed diagrams?
Can you just go back to the channel sign? I think you provided the manufacturer's image, but it seemed to me to be a rendering and I think we had asked for a photograph at night. Were you able to find?
I think I did. I did. I think I submitted that. Change to. This is, this is the document that I submitted. I, most copies I think have this. If I, if, you know, if one was missing, I apologize, but this was what I submitted to, to some people, yes. This is a white channel letter at night. This is local, this is in, in Rhode Island. Is this what you're hoping to see?
Yes. Thank you. I, I just couldn't tell if that was modified any way if it's an actual photograph.
That is an actual photograph of Trek bicycles. They're located on Post Road in Warwick. South of the Quin, up and on.
And the lettering is going to be white on your building?
Yes. The lettering of the sign will be white. This is the, this is that drawing. The letters are upper and lowercase, the higher, the uppercase are one foot high. I calculated the area based on all uppercase letters. So these are 24 square feet, I think 24, 25 square feet per, per sign. And we have two of them. So we are allowed 50 square feet of signage on this property. So they are, they're shown on this drawing, which is kind of a signage site orientation. Sign A is on this. There's two signees. They are on the north side of the northeast tower and they are on the west side of the northwest tower. Twenty-five square feet each. This is a detail of the channel letter section. They're about five inches, come about, off the wall, about five inches.
So I think you have to measure it. The whole. But I think you're still, you're still in the correct square footage for zoning.
And would you mind just going to, to the materials page? And thank you for including all of that. That's the brick choice, the Rockland blend.
Yes.
I had a question.
I can get a sample, physical sample of this done and, you know, delivered, like they can, they create a blend and they put it together and they ship it out. That'll be like a 24 by 20 inch now block.
That would be nice.
So there's, you know, color, there's colors, solid colors, there's blends, which this is a blend. Then there's texture and effect. So this has a blend, a texture and an effect.
That's so much truer to the, the drawing. So thank you for providing that. I did have one question on the the accent panels.
Yes.
Do you know, in terms of their, do they tend, how do they weather and do they fade in sunlight? Will there be any uneven?
Yeah. So there are different qualities of of paint finish. So we're, we're looking at a floor, floor pan, solid PV color. So is what they say. They say it's durable. Seventy percent P, P D F resins, ceramic or new organic pigments provides powerful chemical bond, superior resistance to ultraviolet radiation, resulting in exceptional color retention, resisting to caulk, chalking, which is the white stuff comes off in chemical deterioration. So sandstone and then tope stone and then this
This is just my own aesthetic. So is there in the, in the, I, I'm really pleased with all of the colors you're showing, just the, the regal blue, was it? It just seems to me to be out of the palette versus the Tahoe or the slate blue. And I'm just wondering, you know, it's, it's.
More to do with their, with the, with the client's, you know, prototype.
Brand coloring.
Design and branding. Correct. So. Right. So they're, they're, yeah, the, the manufacturer of the overhead doors is also, so we, we are waiting actually, you know, these are MBC and there are different manufacturers of panels. So we are, you know, soliciting bids for the manufacturers and they submit, you know, they submit their submittals. So generally this is, this is what we're proposing and, you know, they're it could be that they selected, you know, more custom color or, or some other blue color that's better. So the doors are another manufacturer as well. So we want to try to match that. It's always tricky to do. So I'd like to move on to the view shed binder, if that's okay, unless there's any other comments on the architectural drawings. Okay? So this is kind of a series of images that I am kind of piecing together here that kind of describe the scenario in a little bit more detail from a lot of different angles. So initially, these first images and view shed diagram is, is all about coming south on Route 24 and looking at the, looking at the property. You know, there's quite a, quite a vista that you come south and then there's a curve, right? So there's a vista this way and a vista this way. So, you know, it is an important site. But as you can see, and all along 24, you know, most of the way from 108 down is just completely wooded. There's only a couple of buildings that present themselves. So this is the south view. This is a diagram of you shed sightline study that I did based on known elevations. Now, the X and Y scale are not to scale. Right? So one's more exaggerated than the other. So, so we can, can read it. So, but I have on here all the elevations of the, you know, the attributes of the site. You know, the, you know, the Route 24 pavement elevation, 185 and eye level of the traveler headed south where Industrial Drive is, where the lower level of the the lower level and, and great driveway grade is located. Then the main level elevation, then the top of ledge, ground elevation. It's way up here. So it's way above, you know, the main level. It's, it's higher than the second level almost. And then the third level is there and then the, what we, what we identified on site there is a 40-foot-high tree canopy at Industrial Drive. There's an elevation at 235. That's approximately here. So those are the trees that are at the roadway on the, on the north side of Industrial Drive and on the, on the there, there are a few trees that are close to the grade on Industrial Drive. Most of them start going up the hill. But that's the lowest, you know, tree canopy. And then the low eve height is here, high eve height. The, the parapet is there and then the 40-foot tree at the top of the knoll. So if the trees start at the top of the knoll, they're that high above, above the building. So the building is covered with trees. There are a couple of sections where, you know, this curb cut where you can get a glimpse into into the lower level drive area. But still there's trees in front of, between Industrial Drive and 24.
Can you explain to me? I, I'm starting to get it. I just looked at the picture. I saw these green O's. I don't know.
Too much information, I know. So. Yep. So these one, two and three are actually at different distances away. Or, you know, what you see the third for.
I get that, but what are the green O's?
The green, the green circles are trees. Come on, they're trees. It's kind of like, it's, it's a screen in front of the building.
Represents one tree or these represent higher trees?
Each circle represents a leaf. No, I'm sorry. It's basically like a screen that's in front of the, of the building diagram. And the elevations show the floor levels and the building is just kind of pressed together. So the trees, there's trees before the building, there's trees in front of the building and after the building, above the building.
So it should be looking vertical. I should be looking at the, at the bottom vertical.
When you're, see these three lines, those are kind of sight lines. That's your eye level on the roadway driving.
I got that part. I was getting closer to that.
Like it's, it's very difficult to, to accurately portray it in a way that's easy to understand and has enough information to, to convey it.
Did you do one?
Too much information, but it's a graphic.
No, but then did you show one that shows what happens in the winter when all the leaves are gone?
No. So what I do show is some other, so that's the first part. That's the, that's the southbound view. Here's an aerial view of the site. So over here is where Progress Road comes in. So you see all these trees in front of the site. This is the, kind of the rocky knoll area here where those trees look slightly higher. These are the trees where the building is going to be right in here. And this low area is where the wetland exists.
Did you go on that sidewalk? Were you on that?
Yes. Some other photographs of that as well I can show you. Here's another view, kind of like at the roadway coming towards, towards the property that this is where the property is the high point. That's where the knoll is. And this is what you see looking left here. Which is what we don't want to see. This is, oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Actually, if I could say something while you're kind of getting that ready. It reminded me when you showed the picture of the other building. I remember when that building was being built. And, well, before they kind of were built, they were clearing it a lot. But I remember during that period of time, there was a lot of animals that were being hit on the highway. Just wondering if there is any way and when they're going to start clearing, if there's any way to, to stop that kind of.
Yeah, provide protection of the wildlife without. Provide protection of the wildlife without. Potentially a fence. Like a snow fence on, on. Industrial drive, like at the road level on, on industrial drive, towards the highway that would. Have them. Find another one out.
Yeah, because there, I'm, there was a, quite a few deer and, because I, I go that way to, to work every day. And there was quite the excess of. Deer, turkey and, and so on and so forth that were. Being hit and it's. It's not a pleasant thing.
No. So here's a pretty good view of the, of the site at, at wintertime. This is like. Directly perpendicular to the site on Route 24. And, you know, this, it seems like you can see in there pretty, pretty well. But just understand that no one really looks at this. View for more than a. Like two seconds. Generally, you're running, you're coming in an oblique angle to the site. So, but this does show you kind of how the rock outcroppings. Go and that there's.
Was that other photo taken with a drone? The one, the aerial?
It's actually from probably Bing Maps.
So that wasn't very recent.
It's, it's current. I mean, there, there's no change to that aerial view. In. 10 years. But it's a, it's, it's their most current image. Now, this is a more of a southerly. Approach from the south. And here's another diagram of, it's similar in nature, but. Essentially has. Has the same information. As the other. But just a slight, the, the angle is different because, because you're closer to the building. On the northbound. And, you know, the, the view of the, of the signage. See, this sign is actually on that side of the building. I'm just kind of giving you an idea of. Of that. And those ends are to indicate what the. Mechanical units are at that level. Behind the parapet wall. So here's a winter view approaching the site. Right in there is where there's a sign. Next image, but so that the building is kind of actually across from these large pines. So when you get to those large pines is what you, you know, your view. Up towards the building. So it's very obscured even in the wintertime. Here's a view of the site from at, at progress and industrial way. And, you know, this, I think it's this tree right here, I believe is dead, completely dead oak tree. There's a couple of other trees that are not that healthy. No, I don't actually want to get too into the, the meaning, but you know, these, these trees. Rick indicated that the town. Might be interested in harvesting some of these small saplings. As part of the selective clearing to selective thinning to, you know, use in some other. Town property to, to screen like maybe the public works. Building. You can really see this, you know, really nice ledge outcropping, which is a really nice feature. That's it. I show you just kind of briefly, this is the, this is that. Right of way. That's, that's about. 60 by 100 feet. This is about 45 feet by 175 feet. Of land, which is like 13,800 square feet. Not all, that's, that's what. The town owns. As right of way between the, the edge of the road and the property line, the development site. So not all of that is wooded. Can see this, this squiggly line right here. That's the tree line. Generally, so that, you know, 15, 10 to 10 to 15 feet. Back from the road line is where the ledge and the, and the vegetation start. And over here, it's more like 20 feet. 20, 25 feet from the edge.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
So I just wanted to clarify a little something. You said at the beginning, are you talking about separating out? The town right of way from the approval of this project? Or?
Yes. So there's a, a process that. Jennifer and I discussed. Which is essentially. Make a, make a proposal and address it to you, Susan, the chairman of the planning board. And get letters from planning. And. The Department of Public Works. And then have that reviewed by the planning board and get a letter of recommendation that would go to the town council. For, for a recommendation to them and then they would review it and take action on it. And as Richard had discussed. Typically, when the town or oftentimes when the town has a developer. Makes improvements to the town right of way. That work scope and agreement is essentially in the form of a contract that. A negotiated contract. That is. Executed probably from the, by the town manager or town administrators. Based on the recommendations of all these. That's my understanding. So that's, that's quite a long process. And it, it's not a requirement. To do any selective clearing here. It's a, it's a respectful request of the developer. And we believe that. You know, there's benefit to the developer to, to do this improvements. It's basically clean, clearing and cleaning. Of the, of the property. That, but it will also be in an asset or improvement to. The town's asset, which is the industrial park. That original. Right of way. I mean, this right of way. Here, there's a very wide right of way at industrial drive. But then there's this, this large right of way at the corner. And this could be developed to create a gateway. Lance, you know, something very. Aesthetically pleasing and to bring some attention. To the industrial park. So what we're, we're talking about is essentially just. You know, removing dead and dying trees in here and things that are under, you know, two to two and a half inches. Limbing trees up. You know, maybe six or eight feet above the ground. And removing some. Invasive species that have been growing along this area that just create. A barrier, visual barrier.
That means, yeah, the whole negotiation would be with the town council.
After recommendations from, from the director of public works, the director of planning and the planning board. Recommendations to the town council. And then they would. Take action on it.
And then when were you planning on? I mean. It sounds like this isn't going to be tied to our preliminary plan. Do you anticipate that you want to be proposing? You want to wait till you clear? You know, the, your lot for work or are you planning to?
Oh, as far as doing, doing this work. It, it depends on when, when an approval, if an approval comes, but I think that the clearing of the lot. Operations for constructing the building is a very different operation than selective clearing. Of, of the woodland. The woodland clearing is a much more delicate. Precise thing. It's. Different people would be doing it, so it would not have to be done at the same time. It's more of a landscaping. Action than a tree clearing, logging.
I can't remember. Tell me again. What, at the base of all the grading on the site?
Here?
Yeah, this triangle, this triangle to the left was.
This. Yep, there are trees there as well. They are not being removed, I don't believe. They would be selectively thinned as well.
They're not playing doing grass or any kind of landscaping there.
There's trees there currently. So there is landscaping proposed. Here. And one of the things we discussed at the site was this. This cut. At the, at the. At the curb cut, you're also regrading significantly to, you know. Create grade there. And rather than having that ledge exposed, we are planning to. Install some. I think it's mountain laurel. I'm not sure exactly if kale is mountain laurel, but mountain laurel is what we discussed. And then these trees here be in. Birch.
And then all the runoff goes. You assume that's.
All the runoff goes down to this drainage swale here. It's a stone swale. Collected by a catch basin. And probably be some. Sedimentation. There's also, at the bottom of this hill, there's also a. There's a, a grate. Drainage grate there.
I, I have a question. Are you? What is the rationale or the purpose for removing? Or taking a separate action that you're suggesting in regard to? The selective thinning. That you've just been discussing and taking that out of the project, but putting it through as a separate. Process with the council. What, what is the intent or purpose behind doing that?
If, if I could just interject. Here. The, the reason for that is. That. The, our project. Is really focused only on this. Property. And that's what the planning board has jurisdiction over for purposes of, of the approval, approval process.
Yes.
What's, what's being done in the public right of way? Is really in the jurisdiction ultimately of the town council. And so we don't think we could, you know, those two. Two proposals should be married together. One. The developer is going to, you know, move forward with. With this project, you know, provided he gets the approvals. Required here. But it's not necessarily contingent on. Whatever upgrades landscaping, thinning might occur in the public right of way. And, you know, that, that would be separate and apart from, from this.
Right. No, I understand that. So, but then is your client suggesting that in this separate plan to the town council that they're going to propose? Making those improvements for the town upon their approval?
Yes, I don't, yes, it would be the, the developer. Would be the, the, the party agreeing to undertake the work there. There would be some, I am certain, some negotiation relative to the maintenance. Associated with the.
Right, since it's a public. Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the plan of the thinning itself. Would be what would, would be voted on by the town, but the, the developer is planning to. Propose to do that work.
Yeah, it would be at the sole cost and expense of the developer. That's correct.
And so Travis and or Susan, what, is there an action? Tonight? Given that, that we need to. Sign off on it anyway?
No, I think what he was saying initially, once they, they, working with Jennifer or Rick, get, get a plan, it would come to us and we would follow.
You would make recommendations.
After we, when we would have a recommendation and also Rick. So once they submit whatever their final proposal is going to be for that, that right of way. We'll have an opportunity to look at it, make comments. And Rick will come up to me to look at it, make comments, and then those will go to the council. And then. They will be the ones to decide how much and what will be done with that, because it's town property. I actually believe that we don't have to define a determination on that.
No, I, I think that's, that's great in that the developer is willing to potentially undertake that, but that. If this body has input certainly on, because as was stated, it is a gateway to. The industrial park. And so. This could be a win-win. And I, I just think that's, that's great.
It falls under the category of land use. It's just we didn't have the final. Over it, so. Hopefully, yeah, let them get work. You know, be a good compromise for both the outfits and for the town. I think. I don't think we're, I mean, we're very close. I think we just have to do some cleanup stuff on the site plan and get the legal documents together. Yeah, we're just about close to, to. Getting this through. I can't see who else that's holding this up. If anybody from the board has any other comments or questions they want to make.
Just wanted to say thank you for addressing all of the. The points on both the site plan and on the design elements. It's much appreciated.
I, I think it's a big improvement, you know, for what we started with. So thank you for, for responding to our concerns.
This is so visible. Everybody in town will have comments to make. So that's why we feel. You know, do the best we can. With, with, with this. Not everybody will be happy, but you know, it's the way it is. Trying to do our best.
So we appreciate all the time and your diligence. With this process.
Where's the process?
So there needs to be an extension? Yes, the time clock is, is running out.
So Susan, if I could just to let you know and the board know, I've downloaded the DEM permit. The conditions of letter as well as the plans. The plans are consistent with what's in front of the board. There was one condition of changing an invert that has actually been done. So. Suffice it to say, you know, the, the permit is issued. And they had no, no comments other than that one invert and that change has been made.
All right. Well, once we have it in the file, Jennifer has it in hand and all that, that'll be, that'll be fine. That's good. All right. So, yeah, so we need to do an extension of the time clock. And if you want to request that, it should be safe to ask for the two months. Just because that gives us two meetings to get this finished up in case we don't have it finished after one. You want to request that extension?
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, do you want to go to the December 31st? I think that's what we did with the other one. We should be, we should be well in hand, but just so we don't have to keep doing this. So is there a motion to extend the time clock to December 31st?
Second.
Extension to December 32, 2023 time clock. Got to go through the roll call. Amanda?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Susan? Yeah. Adam?
Yes.
All right, Dave?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Yes.
And then. Your motion to continue the public hearing. And then, um, we have a motion to continue the public hearing to November 10. Like, have you guys enough time? It's five weeks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm certain that could give us enough time. However, I know that, um, I actually have a conflict on, on November 10th, so I'm going to have to try to, uh, find, you know, uh, see if one of my partners can handle the meeting. I, I have another special hearing, uh, that night, so.
Again, Zoom board?
I might be able to.
I know, you don't have to be, you only have to be in one place, right? Um, okay. Um, if it, if it becomes a problem, if somebody else can't represent you, we'll try and make that adjustment. Um, but we'll continue it to November 10th, the public hearing. Um, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Who's, who's the second?
Me.
Oh, Stu. All right. It sounded like your voice, but it wasn't true. Um, all right. So I have a motion as second to continue the public hearing to November 10. All right, here we go. Roll call. Amanda?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Susan? Yes. Adam? It is Adam. Dave?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And Christine?
Yes.
All right, great. Hopefully we'll see you on November 10th. Um, do you have any information to Jennifer as soon as possible, all right? Because I think that gives you five weeks, if there's an extra week on there. All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, Madam Chair.
Yeah?
I'm sorry. Um, I don't know if the rest of the board had a chance to see Jennifer's, uh, agenda items report on page three. The, there should be a separate report to the file that we normally get about the September the 11th sitewalk with the various individuals that appeared and, uh, what happened. Rather than, I, I'm glad it's in her report for tonight's items, but just for the file, we normally get one. I don't mean to create work for you, Jennifer, but normally.
That's okay. Sue, Sue, Sue mentioned that.
Oh, okay. I mean, so that it doesn't fall through the cracks. Yeah. Maybe you could cut and paste what you wrote here and throw it in the file. Thank you.
Sure.
I also just had a question about the special workshop.
Oh, yes. Wow.
I thought originally, and I don't know if I missed the time, I thought it was for eight o'clock, so I have a conflict. And I don't know how long it plans to go, so I could join late, but I can't be there for seven.
Okay.
I thought it was eight o'clock for some reason.
Yeah, um, yeah, as far as announcements, that was this Thursday, the joint meeting for.
Yes.
I believe, yeah, it's at seven, right? And I think it's a joint meeting. I know, did Agenda for the planning board get posted today?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, if we don't have a quorum.
That's okay. It's really protection for you guys if, if a quorum joins, that it was announced, but it doesn't, you don't need to have a quorum.
Right. Because it is a workshop, right? Yeah, it's a workshop. So, yeah, so if you, if, you know, we're still, they're still going after an hour, you can certainly.
Sorry.
No, no.
Crazy week.
Yeah, um. I know we're all ready now. Now, if we could do just a couple of the business items, get these. If we could do the minutes, approval minutes, September 1st.
Oh, I have something.
Okay.
Page one, uh, the paragraph that started with my name. Uh, Ms. Eva noted that the subject property contained around 113 acres with other buildings not, I can't read my writing, not on the plan, i.e. two barns, a trailer, et cetera. I think that should be added.
Other buildings noted on the plan.
Yes, this was the Antoinette Roderick, uh, petition with Mr. Carr came in with his ERS. They didn't have a, a plan that showed the other buildings. And I asked if they, uh, if it applied, the ERS applied to the entire parcel.
Um, Kara, did you get all that?
Well, it's being recorded, so.
Okay.
All right, well, um, anything else?
Uh, page five, Ms. Gill noted that Edward, Edward Avenue would remain a private road and would not be provided town services rather than allocated. On the, on page six.
Yep.
Again, I can't read my writing. Oh, never mind. Oh, down at the bottom. Ms. Gill continued the public hearing to, I think a date should go in there because we specified a date certain. On page six, the last item E. And did we have two votes on the last item seven? Mr. Mary, Mr. Perry made a motion to continue public hearing to a special meeting scheduled for September 15th. The motion passed, but I think we had, I thought we had two votes on that.
And seven, what? Which one? Seven?
The last one.
The last one, next.
Yeah.
Meeting, adjournment.
We, we continued the public hearing with it, with a vote. And then we made a mo, I don't know, I, it didn't sound right. Just check it out.
Oh, yeah, but you think it's September 15th and then a motion, no, and a motion to.
Oh, yeah, I think you just announced.
Okay.
The meeting. You didn't vote to have the meeting.
Oh. To continue it. Yeah, okay.
All right, if you have any other questions?
Make a, I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Okay.
Any other comment? All right, if you voice vote, Amanda?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Susan? Yeah. Adam?
Adam was absent.
Yes.
Adam was absent. And so was Stu.
No, no, it wasn't.
Dave, yes.
At least my name is on there.
It's, yeah, because you were absent.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Oh, then I could, then I can't vote.
Peter?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I think we lost Adam. Getting too late, probably.
I second that.
Number 15, I know, we want to get the minutes done. Any amended amendments, changes?
I, I think it should be noted that it was a Friday meeting. Wait, is that the one that's a Friday? Wait a minute.
No.
Nope, sorry. I'm off. This was a special meeting.
Okay, so I have a, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Who's absent? So Dennis and Christine aren't absent. Okay, so you guys don't have to vote. Okay, so Amanda?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Susan? Yes. Um, Adam?
He's not here.
Dave?
Yes.
Yeah, and Peter?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have all the easy ones, September 18 minutes.
I think it should be a, a specified that it was a Friday.
And so where, oh, Friday, September 18?
Uh, yeah, duh, in special meeting, the planning board to order at 5:00 P. M. on Friday, September 18th. And then in the next paragraph, uh, it was an ad hoc technical review committee, just ad, ad hoc. I was not there. You were absent, right?
And where, Rosemary?
I don't think it was an ad hoc meeting. It was just a special meeting, right?
No, when she, it, no, no, no. She mentioned, Ms. Gill stated that an ad hoc technical review committee meeting had been held on July 27th in the body of the.
Okay, I'm just getting tired.
Not a problem.
Okay, so we have a first, a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Then a second?
Second.
Okay, so who is it? Let's see, Dennis, Adam, Christine. Okay, Christine and Amanda, you don't vote. So, um, Rosemary?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Susan? Yes. Um, he also doesn't know Adam. Dave?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I think for the slower, we can, we can postpone the, the wing over solar one, Jennifer.
Yes.
Next time, because we'd love to not end it again. Guess we're going to continue the sororities again. Annual license renewal for town council, a possible vote, Coala Quarry and Country View Estates, we don't have those.
Yeah, so, so Bill said that he was looking at them next week and he, uh, he actually messaged me and said that, you know, he had to leave the meeting. But that he, he, he was going to talk about that, but it's next week that he's going to do the checks.
Okay.
Of those, but I know that normally the plant, the planner does the quarry. But, yeah, he's going to.
Do both of them. I mean, I think we're reading that differently. There's that the planning, the, the building officer submits his report from a zoning perspective, but the planning partner does strictly from land use. Our, our approval or recommendation isn't dependent on what the building official says, which is way, it was like you wrote it.
Okay, I, I, you know, I thought it would be nice to see his, his input as well.
His zoning stuff is totally separate. Like, if there's zoning infractions, wouldn't that be told? That's totally, or building violations, always take those as something totally separate from land use. Ours would be like if they wanted to put something new in or change things or do additions or something specifically related to land use. Like, when you're doing a, I'm going to, they did a little storage shed. So I don't really.
It was also used when residents had a problem, when they were in violation of the regs.
Yeah.
Right, it came under the building.
Right.
Yeah, I was asking, um, Bill if there were any complaints or anything like that, so.
Like, that's, that's a sore subject because it's a private development, so they always want the town to blame, intervene, and we go.
It was sold too from the original, uh, developer who started it, and it's a corporation that so, they sold to.
And just for the newer members, the Coala Quarry and Country View Estates, these are annual, these are both licensed. So the reason we do, uh, of like a mini review and recommendation to the town council is, um, to provide them that there's nothing missed so that they can renew their license. So that's what that's for.
So I'll have it ready for November.
So, so I don't know, Stu, as far as the, the appointing ad hoc committee, um, related to your.
Um, I, I suggest that, uh, given the lateness of the hour, that we, uh, continue this matter to our next regular monthly meeting in early November. And I'd also like to point out that there's a special, um, workshop, as was mentioned earlier in this meeting, um, on Thursday night, and that will also have a big bearing on, on, on the issue um, of soil and water constraints to building in much of the town of Tiverton. So, um, I think it would be best to just put this discussion off until our next monthly, monthly meeting.
Offense of the discussion. In fact, this is part of the, the topic of discussion. I don't know. We'll see. I guess we'll see how everything goes, happens with that. And then lastly, um, on the checklist and subdivisions, on the checklist, I have updated, everything from all, from our discussions in our last meeting. Uh, I have, Jennifer's requested, I'm still waiting for solicitor comments uh, on the three items that I sent. Um, I really want to get these done so we can, um, approve some of these and see if the applications are coming in, really could benefit from these updated checklists so we can enforce some of this stuff. Um, so we need to get solicitor to complete these for us, um, so hopefully, and that, um, brings me to, well, actually, this is a public hearing, so I have to, this is a continuation of the public hearing. And actually, it's continuation of the public hearing from September 15th.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Uh, second that.
There's no one waiting to speak.
Surprised. So my, well, my question was, I don't know if anybody's up or having a second meeting this month to do these. Like, we could do all these other items as well as try and get these checkbooks done. Um, you know, if people are available October 20th, if there's interest of five people to do that.
Yeah, I, I thought we pretty much agreed to do that at our last meeting. I, I, I think enough people agreed that they were available on the 20th, um, to, to get a quorum.
Really? Oh, that's good.
I agree with you, Stu.
Okay, all right, so I'll put it out there, and I think Jennifer verified with Andrew that we can, we'll have resumed that. So, um, we have a motion to continue the public hearing to October 20th.
So moved. Second.
Okay, so then hopefully we'll keep after, um, Mike and, or Travis. Is that a slow wording? I didn't see which word is, it was free light language, and it was the minority language. But we need to go, um, clarity on so that we know we're doing the right thing. But as soon as I get that information incorporated, I can get them printed out. And I'll get those out too, so we can start voting on somebody.
Madam Chair? I have a question. I, my computer, uh, went out. Item number six, did we get a September A O?
No, it's just about finished. I wanted to look at it.
No problem. I just.
More time.
No, no, no.
But I'll send it out this week. I have to send it to, um, the town administrator.
It comes to us.
Tomorrow, and you guys get it.
We're first.
Okay, so second, um, continuing the public hearing on checklist and subdivisions to October 20th. So Amanda?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
Yes. Oops, sorry.
Dave?
Yes.
Uh, Peter?
Yes.
And Christine?
Yes.
And then I guess if, you know, if people could just confirm, send it to Tara or to Jennifer to confirm that you can attend on the 20th, so make sure we have a forum. Thank you, everybody. So, thank you, everybody. It's going to be exhausting. It never fails to do that. So with that, do we have a, anybody else have anything to go?
To adjourn.
You got it, Peter. You are the privileged motion tonight.
10:30, I guess, or 10?
10:26.
I know, the time on this clock.